Welcome to our informal meeting. Tonight, Mike Parks is working for Patrick. Patrick is in Columbia, maybe on his way back, the town manager. But Mike's a great guy. He's our information director and is acting town manager tonight. So if you would like, Mike, would you want to like to introduce who's here?
Yes, sir.
And get started.
I appreciate that. First, we're going to hear from the Haney Property Group, and Colin is going to kick us off with your presentation. The floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Colin Brown. I'm a partner with the law firm of KNL Gates in Charlotte. I represent the Haney family. The Haney's engaged us a few months ago to assist them with kind of evaluating their property and what the future of it could be. I'm going to introduce you. Elam Hall will take over the second part of this presentation. He's with HH Hunt. They're a developer. They have a concept for the property. But before getting into that, I wanted to give you all some background. Just location of the property. Here's a map. Y'all know it better than I do. But basically, close to Old Monroe and Wesley Chapel Stotch Road. This is an aerial of the property. Haney Family Properties here, right behind the new Publix. This shows you a highlight of the Haney Family Property. So there's currently not frontage on Old Monroe Highway. It touches a little bit over here on Hayes. But the totality of the site is 71.3 acres. Background of the property, and I don't know if y'all know the Haney's, they are longtime Union County residents. A number of them are here tonight. Here's one of their old deeds from 1958. Some of these go back to hand-drawn surveys. This one's from 1911. Just a lot of interesting history with the property. So you've got a family that is really seeing the growth and change in the area that you all have. And the question now is what happens with this property in the future? Just look at the proximity to your really dynamic commercial center. And so that kind of got us thinking, you know, what does this become in the future? The development concept that Elam will show you tonight is a mixed-use project, and he'll go into this in specifics. But generally, this would have a multifamily. It would have a, the proposal is for an apartment component at this location, transitioning to townhomes. That's attached for sale units. And then some single-family at the rear of the property, arranged around open spaces, a trail network, and really trying to integrate into the commercial center that you have. Elam will go through that in detail. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about why we selected HH Hunt to work with as a partner and why we think this concept is a good one. We spent a lot of time with the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan. This is a very thorough plan, well thought out by your staff and council that adopted it. So we spent time with it. Some of the main takeaways in the vision of the plan, one of the goals was to promote a mix of different types of land uses within each village. The Haney properties within the Sun Valley Village. Also, to provide a diverse range of housing options, including a variety of densities, single-family, multifamily, traditional. Really, the emphasis is for high-density residential, and you guys define that as townhomes, which would be four to six dwelling units per acre. Those are encouraged within a half a mile of a village center. And then it also says that multifamily, and that would be apartments, are appropriate, may be appropriate in a village center. A lot of emphasis, multiple places in the plan, that I think there's an anticipation that Indian Trail would see a growth, increased densities. But when that density comes, they should be located, you guys are really directing that, to the village centers. And specifically, in the Sun Valley Village, the plan notes that there's an estimated capacity for initial 2,000 people just in the Sun Valley area, and that you would expect to see that future growth within the village overlay center. Again, a look at the densities the plan calls for. The plan that HH Hunt will show you tonight has all three of these phases. That's a medium-density single-family, some high-density townhomes, and then a multifamily village center component. So the Sun Valley area village is actually pretty large. The village center is right here, these circles. This shows, this outer circle shows a half a mile from the intersection, indicating that everything within this outer circle is about a 10-minute walk from the intersection. Almost the entirety of the Haney property is within that village center, and that's the area where your plan says it would expect the density. Another thing I wanted to mention is what I call a new residential reality. Your staff was, we had some frank conversations with them. They indicated yet they'd like to see some commercial. There was, I think, some hesitation about multifamily residential. And I think there is, you know, for years, there's been a stigma about apartments and multifamily. But we're kind of in a new realm with what the millennials are looking for, with what empty nesters are looking for. And here's some recent articles. Really, they're looking, this is no longer, it used to be, well, you lived in an apartment if you couldn't afford a single-family home. But that is not where the market is today. A lot of the folks, and certainly residents, that we see looking at this are renters by choice. And a lot of that comes to, they want to live close to things. They're looking for communities that are walkable, so they can live, and they can walk to school, and they can walk to the store, and they can walk to get a drink, or they can walk to their job, or they can walk to dinner. So we're seeing that throughout, and the way to make communities walkable, it takes some density. Single-family development, single-family homes are spread out, and they get farther away. So there's an emphasis, and we're seeing folks that want that, that are willing to pay more to live in an apartment or to buy a townhome, because they want close proximity to amenities. And most of them don't want upkeep. I don't, the new generation or what, but they don't want to maintain a yard. They want to have, they want to be outdoors, they want to walk on trails, but they don't want to cut a quarter-acre yard. So that's really a change in the market. You guys have a terrific example here in Indian Trail. This is the Copus Development. This is straight from their website. I just thought this was pretty interesting. As I mentioned, we are seeing renters by choice. The prices on these things are pretty surprising. So a one-bedroom unit at Copus, which is less than 800 feet, rents for about $1,100 per month. You get up to the two bedrooms, $1,400 up to $1,600 a month. So these are folks that they could afford a single-family home if they wanted one, but most are selecting, they may like the close proximity to amenities, maybe they like the gym, maybe like the pool, maybe they don't like the upkeep, maybe they like the security. So really seeing folks, and driving through, these are just offhand pictures. I noticed, the day I drove through, I saw two Monroe Police Officers and one Union County Sheriff, just to give you a sense of who's living there. You know, teachers don't have a, I'm a teacher car, but I expect that you'd see, those are a lot of the residents that you're seeing, that they want to live in this area. They may be able to afford a single-family home, but that's, they're not choosing to do that. Your comprehensive plan, for speed's sake, I'll move through these, but you note that mostly, your housing stock is single-family. Those are 2011 numbers, so I know you've seen some multifamily since then. But I think you're expecting some more growth in that area. Another point I wanted to make to you is that higher-density residential can provide commercial-level tax revenue with lower school and traffic impact than single-family homes. Your staff mentioned, hey, we'd like to see some more commercial in the area. Sitting in your seat, you're the folks that have to balance the budget. You understand revenues coming off these and services you need to provide. And so one of the things I wanted to show to you tonight is we think of what will this 71 acres become? How do you manage the revenue off this and the services that it will require? Interesting comparison. So Haney Properties here. This is the public shopping center just behind us. The public shopping center is the Handfield Village. That's about a 14-acre site. So you've got Publix, Premier, retailer, kind of at a corner with good visibility. The tax value on that site is about $12 million. Compare that. This is the Copus property that I just talked about. I think this property is probably an inferior location. It's not at the corner of Main and Main. It does not have frontage on a major thoroughfare. But this site, 17 acres, slightly larger, its tax value, $22,700,000. So this property is almost twice the tax value of, you know, a real premium commercial center. And that's just an illustration of, I think, some of the value that a multifamily, well-built, well-designed, valuable can bring to the community. And we do know that this higher-density residential, whether it be the apartment component or the townhomes, they typically generate less students and less vehicle trips than a single-family home. So that's a real positive. Just some kind of high-level estimates, looking at the proposal that HH Hunt will show you tonight. And these are estimates only, but just food for thought. Based on our rough numbers, we think this will probably have water and sewer fees in excess of half a million dollars. We think with the proposal that you'll see tonight, which we would like to build, with the multifamily component, the townhomes, and the single-family, over the 71 acres, that we think the tax valuation could be about $70 million. That's about 600, so the current rates, their number crunchers tell us, about $600,000 in property tax, of which Indian Trail's portion would be about $130,000. Transportation, I know is a hot item in this area of Western Union County. I think you're all probably aware that improvements are on the way. This is something, as we get into this, so as you know, we're very early on. We're trying to kind of get a read on our proposal from you all. But as we go forward, we'll be working with NC DOT on our improvements, coordinating those up. As you probably know, there is, this is the Haney property here. There is already design for the improvements coming down the length of our property, and our understanding is even to take it a little bit further now. That's a look at the cross-section that is currently proposed. I understand the county, or the town, maybe has an alternate proposal coming along. But the point I'm making to you on this is about capacity and the ability to serve this development. The timeline that we're looking at currently from NC DOT, they're saying they will begin acquisition 2019, with construction hopefully beginning in 2021. We think that could dovetail pretty nicely with this development, and would certainly be able to work with your staff on some phasing commitments to make sure our stuff didn't get there before the infrastructure improvements do. Here's an estimated development timeline. You know, it's 2019 tomorrow, almost. We expect the rezoning process, if we choose to move forward and follow this, will probably take us somewhere into the middle of 2019. After that, there's some property acquisition permitting. We think, best-case scenario, site work, infrastructure could start in early 2021. We think you'd probably see multifamily beginning mid-2021. Townhomes and single-family would come on, be completed a little bit earlier than multifamily, mid-2022. Apartments coming online mid-2023, and multifamily complete in mid-2023. So we've got some runway to match up with that. School impact, always something that we discuss at meetings like this. We're not deep in the weeds on this, but understand that Union County Public Schools is looking at some significant improvements to Sun Valley. So excited about those. I think we probably see that more as an employment opportunity for residents than there will be some students. In summary, we think the Haney property, the Haney's who I represent, we think it's ideal for some higher-density housing. Your plan contemplates that. I know that as a town, you're probably getting a lot of folks talking to you about multifamily and apartments, and you don't want that, you know, saturating your town. So I think it's important to decide where are the right locations, and we think this is the primo location. The proposal would create a walkable component of the village in close proximity to employment and retail. Just take a look at, this is the site plan overlaid. This is really a dynamic commercial center. The development here with the theaters has attracted really high-quality retail tenants. Those are nice restaurants that people are going to want to take advantage of. And as we look at it, we've talked about commercial with your staff, but we think the village center, if you look at it, there's a substantial amount of commercial square footage there, both old and new. And we think, rather than saturating with more commercial competition, what they could really benefit from is some higher-density housing close by, residents with disposable incomes that can walk and support those uses. And also, we think that the higher density will provide a higher tax value and less infrastructure impact. The town, I think, has done a good job. This is a, this is my photo of the public center, or maybe from Google Earth, being intentional about connections. So the Haney property is here in the distance. This has been teed up to have a connection directly to the Haney property. Additionally, this didn't happen by accident. Your town has required pedestrian improvements, so there are already sidewalks in place. Elam will show you how our plan ties into that. But if you look at this and think, if we're going to have multifamily, where do we want it? Here is a way to put it in walking distance to a grocery store. A little bit further walk, but walking distance to your real entertainment attractions. We've got Sun Valley here, which, as I mentioned, we see this as kind of employment. It's a great place for teachers to live nearby, and you've got your proposed greenway to the rear. All of this within 10-minute walk of the center of the intersection. So we think it's an ideal location. With that background, I'm going to turn it over to Elam to let him tell you more about the specific plan.
Thank you, Colin, and thank you, council, for the time this evening. As Colin mentioned, I'm Elam Hall. I'm with HH Hunt. And I travel North and South Carolina, looking for opportunities to build communities and add to existing communities. And one thing I wanted to kind of highlight out of Colin's presentation is I see a lot of comprehensive plans and a lot of future land use plans at various municipalities. And you really do have a good plan. And the reason for that is it's intent on building walkable nodes. With the Sun Valley Village overlay, you've got a strong retail center. And it's important to, when creating these nodes, to look at either a retail core or an office core as opportunities to surround them with denser housing, so that the people that live in those dwelling units can choose to get out of their car. They can choose to walk or bike to the grocery store, to the restaurant, or to their workplace. And so I think that's what we've tried to accomplish with this plan. HH Hunt specifically has been in the development business for over 50 years. We're based in North Carolina and Virginia, and we operate from South Carolina to Delaware. One of the things that's a little bit different about our firm, and something that really does differentiate us from other multifamily housing developers, is that we develop to hold. So we, as, or others oftentimes will come in and build a community and then sell it as fast as they can, in a lot of cases. We are developing to own it and operate it. And so we actually have communities that we've owned and operated, that we've developed in the '70s and '80s. We've owned them for decades. And I put that up there, you know, we're currently operating or constructing over 8,000 multifamily apartment homes in that same footprint. And we also do senior living communities. We have over 20 of those in the same footprint. Two of our communities that we developed, one is in Charlotte, Aberly Woods, near North Lake Mall, and we have another in Mooresville, Aberly Green. Another advantage of that model is that we have to build to a higher-quality standard if we're going to own it for decades. A lot of multifamily developers, the ones that are going to sell, they will, you know, do things to save money. And we can't do that if we're going to own them for decades. Our plan was generated with a lot of work from a lot of talented individuals, but we also, different groups on our team had various meetings with Patrick and Rox and his staff, and Gary, Katie, and Todd, and their input went into this, which is important, because they obviously know a lot about your community, living here and working here. But what we've done, which again is in line with the comprehensive plan, is we've really kind of put that multifamily housing up close to the retail, and maybe even future retail on Old Charlotte Highway. And we've moved across the site with townhome, for-sale townhome product behind that, moving out to the edge where we do some larger single-family lots. Another suggestion that was made that we really latched onto and liked a lot is if you can see up in the left corner there, which would be adjacent to the public shopping center, we have added an acre public park, which is something we'd like to dedicate to the town should we move forward. We think that's the perfect location for a public park. People that go to the retail, or live in the apartments, or live in the townhomes can get there easily and walk to it. Another thing that we've found that you all have done a tremendous job with is building out a trail system. I understand you all recently had ribbon cutting on a trail. And so we've added a multi-use path across the community as well that runs from the park. It's hard to see there. I'll try to mouse over it. But it runs from the park up here, past our dog park, across, down the stream here, and out to this kind of northeast corner. And I understand that the future plan shows a community greenway path on this property. So we thought it could tie into that well. This is a quality development. The townhomes are alley-loaded, which is a great way to make them more upscale. And the apartments have higher-end amenities, like a saltwater pool and a dog park, and detached garages as well. That plan is based around all three-story walk-up garden units. We have another plan that we wanted to show as well, that allows for a little bit more product diversification. You can see here, south of the public park on this version, we have a U-shaped building. These are called manor buildings, and we like to do these communities where we kind of intermix product types, which is, again, another option. But this would provide elevator-served interior corridor units, which are a little bit more high-end. They're also, a lot of times, preferred by empty nesters, elevator, you know, service to their floor. That's surrounded, again, by garden units, providing some product differentiation. It also creates some architectural variation on the site. It's a little bit denser as well, so on this version, we actually grew the public park. It's an acre and a half, and, you know, that could be an option as well. So here's the total, the full layout, kind of next to your really tremendous retail center. And I also included a few renderings of stuff we've done in the past. This is one of our other communities in Virginia. Another one, this kind of shows a four-story facade, which could be similar to what we're showing for the manor building. And then just some concept imagery. Sometimes we'll pull images from the web that may look like, you know, what we'd like the clubhouse to look like, or the pool area to look like, to just some examples. Indoor, maybe this is the display kitchen in the clubhouse, or a kind of patio, indoor patio area outside the pool. And just another shot of that first site plan and the overlay by the retail. And so what this comes out to, kind of in totality, is a, around a little over 300 apartment units, 500 units total. Of course, this is 71 acres, so overall, across the entire development, it would only be about seven units per acre.
And that last slide is, there's kind of an image from your comprehensive plan that shows the densities that you would expect in that area. And so I haven't, we haven't broken out by acres, but we could do that for you. But we think that that's kind of in line for what you guys were calling for. In fact, it seemed like on the low side of the density.
And I think that wraps it up for us, so we're open for discussion.
Mr. Parks? Counsel, if I may, before we get started, do we have a representative here from the Potter Road Developments? All right. Thank you, sir. So, counsel, we have about 10 to 15 minutes for questions before we move on to our next discussion. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? No, I mean, you're basically laying it out for us and showing us, so I think we knew where it was.
Yep.
And it's a nice, big chunk of land back there. So...
Well, so on behalf of the family, we appreciate kind of having this opportunity. And this is a major deal for the family, and a major decision of whether to move forward with a developer. As you know, or maybe if you don't know, a rezoning process can be very expensive and time-consuming. And so we appreciate your staff and appreciate the opportunity, and would hope that we can get some feedback either from you all, or if that factors back through staff, that's fine. But from the family's perspective, there will come a major investment of time and money moving forward, and just like some feedback, you know? If you can be frank with us, and if it's dead on arrival, tell us now. It'll save everybody a lot of time and money. But I think the family has a good team that is looking forward. You've got a good staff. So we're showing you as a concept, and we're happy to, you know, have a conversation through this rezoning process and see if we can shape this to get something that we can all be happy with.
Staff does have a couple of questions. If council doesn't have any?
Yeah, the one question I have on this presentation, is it available after this meeting?
You guys, we've sent it to you all, so it's on your system.
Go ahead, Mr. Parks.
How many people actually still live over there? Do any of you live on the prop? All of you? All of you still live over there?
Yes.
So you're going to pick up, move, if, you know, everything goes, you'll leave?
We don't have a choice.
No, you don't. You don't. You plan on staying in the Indian Trail area, or you're going to?
We really don't go.
You're going to be like, what was the guy that moved up? George, like George, you moved to the big, moved up to New York somewhere, in a condo or something like that, you know?
No, sir.
That's great. That's a beautiful piece of property, and, boy, I tell you, I don't know what you paid for it a long time ago, but I'd like to buy it for that and sell it for, you know what they always say? I'd like to buy it for that and sell it for what it's worth now. So congratulations.
I've got one question in terms, if you can go back. You're showing an exit through Hanford Village.
Where's the best slide?
That's fine.
Okay. There's a connection point to the commercial center. I think that was discussed during the rezoning of that property. I think that had been some Haney land also.
Right.
And we talked with your staff about, and I wasn't sure where this would go, and these are things we talk about through the rezoning process. Staff asked if we would consider maybe trying to acquire some property to have direct access here, and that depends. So that's an option. Some towns we work with, they say, well, we don't want you all having a big face on the street. We'd rather you have it set back. So those are all things we could talk about. But the direct access to the commercial center is absolutely essential, and that's what makes this actually walkable. That direct connection just makes a lot of magic work. I showed you the interior photo, so that you'll have, there's a link coming over the property line. There's already sidewalks, so folks living here can go over, buy groceries, have dinner. And as Elam said, the thought is, if this does become, that public park comes to fruition, that supports your retail over here and can kind of bolster that, because they've got an amenity too.
So you have no connection, so is there a connection here on the, is it Haney? Oh, Hayes, excuse me, yeah, Hayes.
On this plan, the connections are here and here. I think the focus would be on this being the main entrance. One of the things where our traffic engineers will work with are, there are planned improvements to, this is Hayes Road, I have that right? There are planned improvements here. And we're happy to work with staff and decide, there may be some opportunities for direct access to Old Monroe. But for, that's quite an investment acquiring that. We'd like to make sure that's the direction y'all would like to see us go.
And speaking on behalf of staff, that is something that we would be interested in, in hearing more from you on that direct connection to Old Charlotte. And then while we're talking about that, if you could go back to the slides about the number of units, could you talk to us a little bit more about possible traffic impact?
Yes, we have not fully, so one of the things we'll do is if we kind of decide we're moving forward with this, we have a traffic engineer teed up. So they would do the traffic impact analysis, and they would do the coordination with NC DOT. And assuming, working with you all, I think you all have an alternate plan you'd like to see for some of the improvements, so of how that new streetscape is going to look. So obviously, this kind of works out to be a good time for us to be involved, and if decisions are being made, have our traffic consulting team in there and lobbying for, if you think it's positive, and we think it's positive, then we can together try and lobby NC DOT from some of those.
I think your traffic study might be a little bit off, as far as when they're actually really going to start the Monroe...
So this is just from NC DOT's website, and y'all are probably in more communication with them than we are.
Am I right or wrong? When are they supposed to actually start construction? Does that, I don't...
Todd. 2021.
Is it 2021 they're actually going to start? Okay, then it is right.
That's what's on, but...
I was thinking it was later.
That's right.
That's right? Okay.
Well, I mean, that's what the shooting board have.
Okay. Got you. Well, good deal. 2021's getting here pretty quick, too.
Yeah, that's right.
2019, couple a month.
Todd or Rox, do you all have any further comment from engineering or planning?
I'll just add in a couple of points, and just to help, or just to inform council that we had met with, I'll call it Team Haney. And so a couple of weeks back, it's, most recently, a couple of weeks back, to talk about a version of the plan, very similar to what you saw on the screen. And just some high points that we shared with them. One, Mike has already mentioned, as well as Colin, is we did emphasize that a connection to Old Charlotte Highway would be important. Little bit of concern, the connection to the grocery store and the shopping center is great, but we don't want to overwhelm that commercial driveway and circulation through there, and that would be an important element. What Colin had already mentioned, a traffic study, which it sounds like they've already kind of kicked off, finding the right team member for that would be needed. An early version of the plan did have some commercial, more interior development. We just stayed that if there was going to be commercial, we wanted to be fronting the highway, not interior development. They've adapted the plan to reflect that feedback. And then finally, we just spoke about, there is a single-family detached home component on the top right of the screen. We just asked them to explore any ways to come up with a more independent access point for that little pod, so that you're not driving through the apartment community and townhomes to get all the way back to the single-family. And that was just more of a high-level comment, and see what they could come up with creatively. Uh, but otherwise, uh, the team, the Haney team has been very receptive to hearing, um, our thoughts and ideas and articulated the comprehensive plan consistently fairly well. And so, um, just wanted to kind of outline the, the, that discussion we had a couple of weeks back. And Todd, I don't know if you had any more?
No, I get all the points.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Ron. Staff's good?
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Did you want to get right into the second one? Okay. So go ahead and, and welcome our, our second group with the Potter Road Developments. Kathy, do we have a presentation? Okay.
But if these gentlemen could give me their business cards, that's great. We appreciate it.
Council just gave us a couple of minutes, we'll be ready. Okay, thank you.
How many of those?
Uh, let's see, there'll be one for...
Seven?
Yeah.
And there's, there's how many of us? Five of us.
Have you given me one extra one for the file?
That's me. You.
No, 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 I see some of those coming, that's all.
No, 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 you're good. You do all eight of them there.
Are you the owners of GK Homes?
Yes.
There is none?
All right, then it's just, uh, left and right.
Can we add one?
Left and right, okay.
How do we do that? Just...
Do we have to say what, I mean, do we have to?
Yep.
Council, we're ready whenever you are. Okay. All right, gentlemen, if you could please introduce yourself and then the floor is yours.
Yes. Good evening, thanks for the time, council members. And my name is Satish and we, and this is my partner, Ravi.
Ravi Pasupala.
And we both represent GK Homes and we own a property on the Potter Road. And that is the discussion we want to have is how we want to develop that. That's quick introduction of us. So, can I start off? Yep. And this is the, address is 6429 and it's at the, we just want to give a quick agenda. We're gonna go through what we are and where the location is and what's our plans. And as we said, like, Ravi is my partner. We both from the technology, we work in IT and we also invest in the properties. And my, myself, I'm also a realtor and investor and also a technologist. We, we, combinedly, we have good experience with the investments in real estate. And so it's our dream to start this company, GK Homes. We started and we bought properties under, under it. And our dream is to become a builder, uh, small, starting small. And this can be, you can, you'll be giving us an opportunity to start our business here in, in this community. And the property is located, uh, can you guys hear me clear or it's okay? Yeah. I mean, I know a little bit, accent is a little different, so I'm just trying to... Uh, so the property is, uh, located on the Potter Road. It's, uh, south of Chestnut Lane, uh, which is 9.81 acres. And it is currently zoned for SFI, uh, that is the current situation of the property. And it's almost on the edge of your town limit. It's kind of, Weddington starts right after our property. Uh, it's close to the border. And what we are proposing is, uh, we want to build like 87 townhomes. That is what we plan, uh, which is like in 9.81 acres. And of them, 52 units will be two car garage and 35 units will be with one car garage. And we also plan to build a water pond with a picnic area around it. And we also, there is a neighborhood next to us, like there are three houses in the, next to us. And we want to build a wooden fence on that, on that side of the property line to just give some privacy. And we will, we are planning to have mature trees. There are some mature trees in the property, we would like to leave them if, if possible. And so that's where the, the proposal in a nutshell, what we are planning to do. And, uh, we talked to the team here on using the special use permit guidelines and that's why we are trying to see is, uh, is it a viable option for us to move forward with that guidelines? And, uh, we went through your guidelines and we just listed what we are planning and how much percentage we are using in that, uh, in the property. See, the total square foot of the property is around 9.81 acres and we are planning to use 20% is for the townhomes, actual built up area. And private open space is around 20%. And the streets and rest of the stuff will take 60, 14% of that remaining. And we have still buffers left for 16%. So there is still a good amount of common open space left, which is around 30% of the property. And the parking, we, we have around 218 spaces. One car garage has 70 spaces and two car garages, 208 spaces. So any additional parking spaces we, we need per your code, we can actually add them at the end of the road. And we also have the setbacks of 35 feet and 25 feet to the neighborhood properties and 60 feet from the single family structure, which is adjacent to our property. And street trees, again, it's per code. We have one tree for each 40 feet length. And utilities, we will, I mean, this is still, we haven't flushed out all the details, but this is to be, uh, developed. And the idea here is if we agree that this, that we are on the right path, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, invest more and get more studies and more designs built into that. And we also have the, there is a comparable property which is very adjacent to our property, uh, which is on the corner like one lot away. And I think that is already approved for the high density, uh, development. And on the Monroe's, we have like, just a comparable for the properties here, right? And Ryan Homes is, uh, on the Monroe Road, which you know, and they are selling at 225 to 250K. And they are 5.7 acres and they have 8, 9 townhomes built into that. And the project scope is, uh, we estimate it's around, it's gonna cost us around 18 million, which we, as investors, we're gonna bring in 30% of the project cost. And we would like to finish this project in two to three years if possible, right? And each unit is, uh, we are hoping to price around 200 to 250K with 700 square feet, 800 square feet of the, uh, each unit. It'll be, uh, brick front and if the cost permit, we'll have a full brick, uh, for the properties. So as you know, I mean, uh, with this property, definitely there is some economic growth around that. There is Haris Street, just one mile away from it. And the tax, we are estimating around 16 to 800 per house, which will have the recurring income. Basically, that's where, I mean, we have the plan in front of you guys. The, sorry, I don't have it as soft copy here. And that is the proposed plan. So it is a, our site is like a 10 acre, I mean, 9.8 acres, but it is 300, 330 feet by. It, it extends deep inside the, deep inside. So we don't have much room to play around, to do, navigate much. I mean, we had to put one road all the way down and some parallel roads to the road, main road. And that's how we build the, the site and with the 89, 87 units on it. And the idea is, uh, we'll try to maximize the use of the, uh, the beauty of the land terrain. And the land is a little bit, uh, ups and downs. There is a lot of development to be done. And there's a lot of investment that goes into, uh, actually the development itself. And so it, based on the topology, the, our engineers came up with this plan, what, what we have. And, uh, the idea is, uh, if we can get the approval for the special use permit for this property and that would help us, uh, moving ahead and do the study, a little bit more studies on the engineering and everything to, uh, put some money behind the project. And the idea is for us is to understand whether the council will be okay for us to go in this direction. That, that's the main purpose of our visit to this. So, I mean, our, we are committed, I mean, we live very close by, we live in Marvin area. I'm from Union County. And, uh, so we are committed to growing this business and we want to grow with the community around here. That's, so, that's in a nutshell.
Questions? I have a question, maybe not for you, but how, how close is this to the line, Indian Trail line?
I mean, roughly, it's fairly close to unincorporated Union County. It is, it is sort of on a, it's a peripheral area, if you will, uh, near Austin, sort of near Austin Village.
Yeah, I was just over there the other day and, and saw the, uh, God, really, there's, there's, start at 350,000, they, Walden Village.
Walden Village, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was really nice. It was...
They are nice, yes.
First time I'd ever kind of driven around inside over there and looked, looked at all those things. Is it pretty close to that?
Yeah.
It's in vicen- it's in the vicinity, yes.
And the reason I ask that, uh, a while back, I think somebody, uh, inquired about building a, a, a smaller neighborhood in that area and, and we, we said no. And then I think eventually went back and went to the county and the county's approved it. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with what I'm talking about or not, if anybody else is familiar.
I think the one I'm, the one I'm thinking of is on Waxall Indian Trail Road.
Still, and, and somewhat in that vicinity, not too far?
Hmm, somewhat, that, that side of town, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, it's that side, it's that side of town for me anyway. Um, but anyway, so I guess my point that I'm trying to make, this is, this is in, in Indian Trail.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and, but it's close to the line. And one of the things that I do worry about is, is, you know, whether, we don't, I don't know whether or not we, we can approve it or not, but if we don't, are they gonna move down the road and put it down the road, which is gonna be, then, and that's just something that, that I think will, and worry about, that, that, uh, that might happen.
And if I could say that...
And I don't know what the chances, I mean, what do you think about that? I'm, I'm, maybe...
I, I guess, well, if I could just, if I could interject just a couple of points, so, and, and, and I haven't, I don't have a copy of the plan. I, I haven't worked with the applicants or, um, Todd, uh, from engineering and some other planning staff members have been courting with the applicant. But, uh, the plan, a, a version of the plan that I have seen, um, does not qualify, at least as designed, to come in as a special use permit, which is approved by the Board of Adjustment. There are issues with density of the property, the use of private roads, buffer requirements. And it's just ultimately kind of, the, the site just does not qualify for, um, that, that approval process. And so as I understand, staff has conveyed to the applicant that if, if they wanted to pursue a townhome or some other type of attached home community on this property, is to develop a conditional rezoning application and kind of start fresh with the design. And, uh, I think some, some general feedback has been provided. And so I just wanted to clarify that point. There was a couple of points in the slides where the applicant, where the, the applicant is seeking kind of confirmation that the special use permit process is a viable option. And I think that information's already been conveyed, that generally speaking, it's not for, for what, what's been proposed, uh, and what I believe is, is in front of you. And so the direction staff has given is to work through the conditional rezoning process and develop something, um, you know, that perhaps is not as, as dense and addresses some of the other staff concerns with it. And so I just wanted to kind of clarify that, that point.
Yeah, that is true.
Which, which leads me to my next question is, you obviously have, have you seen the, this before? I mean, have you seen what they're proposing?
Uh, yes, I, I have seen a, and I can't, I've seen a version of this, yes.
You sound a version of it, because it just seems like maybe we, we, we've gone too fast with this. And, 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 you know, I'm kind of wondering why, why we're up here looking at this, if a lot of stuff is not, not even feasible or, or won't fit the, the plan. So, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just curious to ask that question.
And I'll ask, um, I'll speak to that point and I'll ask Todd to, to add any additional, additional information. But as I understand it, uh, the applicant was working through the special, was attempting to use the special use permit process to have this approved, which would not go through council, it'd go through the Board of Adjustment. And that's, that's how the process is outlined in our UDO. But in light of the design and its density and other factors, it doesn't qualify for that process. So, uh, but as I understand it, town staff is advising them, we'll consider going through the conditional rezoning process and, and, uh, consider, you know, some, uh, reworking of the site to address the concerns. And you, there's this other opportunity, you may want to address council to see if, if they would be interested in a townhome. Would, would townhomes be something that they'd be willing to consider in, at this location? And Todd, I'm gonna...
Yeah, basis. In a nutshell, that's what it is, is it's zoned SFI like you saw on the thing and they need to basically get it zoned multifamily. And so, but they don't want to go through the whole hassle if we just don't want townhomes period in that location. So that's, really, that's all they're wanting to, is some feedback before they start investing, kind of.
I got you.
That is true. I mean, sorry, maybe I, we didn't clarify our position there. And we had a detailed discussion with the team and they gave us good feedback. And the idea is, uh, we just want to understand if, if that is a possibility that we can build townhomes in that area or not. If it is not, then we'll just drop the, the process. And if it is viable, then we can go through whatever process the team is suggesting and we can go through the, everything about you, that the company needs, team needs. Yep.
Uh, excuse me, um, what is it currently zoned for?
SFI.
And how many units can you put on that piece of property as it exists right now?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, the, the developability of the property, sorry. The developability of the property is, is based on a variety of factors. Um, you know, how, uh, the layout of the lots, the store, market facilities that are needed. What I can, I, I can share with you, if, if a single, what we've seen with other single family, uh, single family home communities, you know, really, three units per acre, maybe a little over three units per acre is about as, as dense as we've seen developers be able to create a single family product and meet all those other standards for, as an order of magnitude.
How far is this property from Weddington city limits?
Oh, just one lot away.
One lot away, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, there is.
I knew it was close, yeah.
Yeah, there is one more property next to us, which is 10 acre, the same, exactly the same replica of ours. And that's the Weddington line.
And that piece of property's in Weddington?
Yeah. No, ours is the second lot from the Weddington property line.
So the adjacent property is in Indian Trail or...
Is Indian Trail.
Okay.
Is Indian Trail. And they have trailer homes on it right now. I mean, they're not using it, but it's been there for a very long time.
So, but, so basically, that, what, there weren't, from the council as to whether or not we, we would, we would change the...
I, I think...
I, I guess, is that...
I think there are, I think the, the applicant is seeking some broad feedback on whether, uh, you know, the council would be willing to consider a townhome community on Potter Road, you know, subject to, obviously, meeting our ordinances and other, you know, feedback from staff and, and I think that's ultimately, I think, the, the question that's before.
Got you.
Yeah.
Well, that's a fair question and I guess we can, I, I think I need to speak, you know, more with, with staff and learn a little bit more about it.
Okay.
Council, you wanna take some time and talk with staff and then get back to these gentlemen?
Sure.
Okay.
Sometime in the next week or two.
Okay, right. Thank you. Thanks a lot. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas if I don't see you guys. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take 10 minutes. Unless there's something you wanted to add, Mr. Parks?
No, sir.
Okay, 10 minutes.
Thank you.
All right, welcome everyone to the Indian Trail Town Council Meeting for November 27, 2018. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please silence all cell phones, take all calls outside if you need to speak. And if you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. pledge allegiance. All right, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone will remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. This time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yeah. Do you want to add the closed session?
Yeah, yeah. We want to add closed, closed session.
Closed session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
And it could be for purpose of consulting with counsel, consulting with legal counsel.
Okay. Any other additions or deletions? Nope. If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So, no.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Forgive me, but for the record, Councilmember McIntyre is not here. Oh, forgive me again. He just walked in. Welcome. We have several presentations this evening. First up would be the fire fee tax. The county's up first. Mr. James. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
I got you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Now, Counsel, we appreciate the opportunity again to, to talk about the county's fire funding study. The commissioners asked us a few months ago at a, at a Board of County Commissioners meeting that we would go around to our community, talk to our local leaders about our fire funding study. And we've been working on this project for a little over a year now almost. And working with our fire chiefs, working with our county commissioners on some options and recommendations on how we can fund fire in the county. So I think I've got about 10 minutes, so I'll try to go through it as quickly as possible. It's a lot of information, but we're here to answer any, any questions that you have. The main goal is that the council or commissioner really wants to hear back from you all as leaders and to, to get a recommendation on an option that you feel is appropriate for your community. So what we'll go over today, we're going to talk about the fire funding study that we've been doing, what the study was about, what our direction was, our goal was. We'll go over our current methodology. One thing that we learned during our community forum that we held a few months ago was there was some confusion about how we fund fire now. So we want to briefly walk through that, kind of where the expenses are, what the revenue sources look like today. And then we'll walk through all of the alternative funding strategies that are before the board currently that they're considering. And then again, at the end, we would like to have, obviously not tonight, a lot of information to digest, but for the council to provide a letter of support for an option, again, that you guys feel is appropriate for your community. So looking at the objective of the study, we had contracted with Stan Tech Consulting, who's a group out of St. Augustine, Florida. Mr. Burton was the project manager. And what we did, we just looked at the, the economics, the funding of fire protection services in the county, not looking at department operations, not looking at staffing, anything like that. But purely, if everything was to hold true today, how, what's a better way to fund fire protection services? So that was the ultimate goal. We wanted to make sure that we provided as much equity and cost burden among our residents in the county, and that we have a sustainable, long-term funding strategy that, that can meet the needs of our organizations as our county continues to grow, as density continues to change, that we can meet those needs. So over the past, past few months, we've had several meetings with the county commissioners to talk about the options available, to get their feedback, to get additional direction. We've held meetings with the fire chiefs to allow them to also give more input, to give more direction to the consultant in person and to staff in person. And working with them, obviously, a huge part of the study is, is building that relationship and having communication with them. So some of the early direction that we had, we knew that the fire fee model, which in your situation, you're looking at Baker's District, we knew that it lacks sustainability as a model. We're only one of two counties in the state who use a fire fee. Most of the counties in North Carolina use either local district tax or have a countywide tax, but few use the fee model itself. So we wanted to find an option for replacement. We wanted to, to work with the tax office and make sure that all properties in the county who are due a fee or a tax are assessed appropriately. And we worked with the, the tax office to, to clean up any issues. There weren't a whole lot, but there were some that we wanted to look at. But ultimately, again, we wanted to meet the future needs, knowing that our fire departments may struggle getting volunteers. We know that the way that some of the districts have developed, a volunteer structure may not be appropriate anymore. So the cost of fire has continued to grow and density continues to change in the county. So we wanted to, again, keep those things in mind as the ultimate goal of the study. So how we're currently structured today, the council may be more than aware, there's 17 fire service districts in Union County. Five of those districts are local tax districts. They have a, a dedicated tax rate that funds fire protection services in their fire service district. The remaining 12 districts have a fire fee. And the fire fee is done through local legislation from the General Assembly. We started that program in 1991 initially, and we revised that in 2009 to bring it up to where it is today, to a hundred dollar cap. Again, that's governed by the General Assembly. They have to approve that. The Board of County Commissioners, the town council, any other body locally cannot raise that cap amongst themselves. The General Assembly has to act to approve that through local legislation. So the City Monroe and the town of Weddington are the only two municipalities in the county who provide for fire protection services on their own and are not involved in the countywide fire system. Obviously, the City Monroe has a municipal fire department and the town of Weddington contracts with Wesley Chapel Volunteer Fire Department to provide services for their community as well. A lot of our municipalities provide funding and other ways to our fire departments. For example, some provide some debt service payments, provide equipment, truck payments, things like that. They provide that to the fire departments. FY19, it was 13.7 million, a little over that, to fund fire protection services countywide. That has increased 50% since 2009. So again, talking about that increase in cost, it's gone up quite a bit since 2009. And you'll see the revenue breakdown below that. But this just provides a, a, a general description of how we fund fire, totally what's before the Board of County Commissioners, looking globally, looking countywide, and not just at each particular district itself. So here's just a, a budget snapshot. I'm sure the board saw this before. It just shows the countywide rate of 1.03. And the next column, you have the hundred dollar fee for the fee districts and the individual tax rates for our taxing districts. And the next column is the budget request for FY19. And yellow is the revenue sources that we have, some local fire department revenue through grants, fundraising, and the countywide fire tax revenue. And as you can see, that generally goes to our fire fee districts. And because of the cap in the fire fee structure, we have to sub, they're not able to raise the money they need to raise to operate. So a lot of the countywide rate goes to them. Next column is just the, again, the money raised from the fee or the tax. The sales tax column, only our fire tax districts are eligible for a fire, for sales tax revenue. The way the, the state legislation has that set up, you have to have a local property tax levy to share a piece of the sales tax. So our fire fee, since it's not a tax, they're not subject to receiving any sales tax money. So again, that's just a snapshot of FY19 looking countywide. Here is the fee structure that was approved by the board this past year. Again, you'll see the hundred dollar fee for most of our mobile homes, commercial facility over 5,000 pays 200. But this is the current rate or the current fee structure. And, and that has remained true for some time now. So we wanted to share with the council, we asked the, working with the, the consultant, just some, some general information about fire services in Union County. So 80%, a little above that, is actually, has nothing to do with fire responses. They really are life safety service to our residents in our community. A lot of what they respond to are roadway accidents, falls, medical issues. They're kind of our first responders. They do a great job at that. So that is the majority of what they do. And, and 20% of it really going towards actual fire responses. And just to give a, a picture of what the commissioners are facing, so looking countywide and trying to fund a, a equitable fire service across the county, we're looking at some tax districts that just have 126 million dollars worth of value. Excuse me, some of our fire districts have just 126 million of value, and then others that have $5 billion worth of value. So two very different worlds when we're trying to look countywide at funding fire service. And just to provide some additional context for the council, again, that's what the board is, is looking at overall. Agricultural land, for some of our more rural communities, Union County has a heavy, heavy agricultural presence and one of the top ones in the state. It's a huge industrial or huge business presence in the county. And it pays for about 10% of the fire fee, fire tax revenue within the county. And a lot of that falls within the tax deferment program. So if you're in some of our rural districts and you're heavily agricultural, you're dealing with a lot of land values that are heavily deferred, and they're only paying on a small percentage of that land. And the deferment program works well for farmers, is a good program. But when looking at trying to fund a fire department, it makes it a little more difficult in some of our districts that are faced with a, a large agricultural presence. And here's just a, just to show kind of where the density is. As you can see, 66% of our population are within our taxing districts or the City Monroe. But about 70% of the land area that the county is responsible for are within our fire fee districts. And these are very large districts, but not very dense districts. And there's not a lot of taxable value in those districts. Just to show kind of the disparity between the two. And again, talking about the agricultural land, that's 200, over 200,000 acres in Union County that we have. One topic that came up that we wanted to clear up with, with all of our municipalities, a question that came up during our community forum was that if we transition into one of these options where we move or change our fee districts into taxing districts, would that impact the municipals' revenue in sales tax? So we want to make it clear that when it comes, sales tax revenue comes back from the state. There's a, a separate pot that goes to our municipalities based on their property tax levy and a separate pot that goes to Union County. And the second, the part of the money that goes to our fire departments comes from the county's allotment of sales tax and nothing to do with the municipality's allotment of sales tax. So there would be no impact, impact, looking from a budgetary standpoint, for municipalities, you would not see a negative impact on your sales tax revenue by the creation of additional taxing districts for fire. And you can see the, the Bakers, the Hemby Bridge, and the Stallings are sales tax revenue. And we break it out, the, how it declines a little bit due to any increase in a subsidy of the county chooses to do that. Again, just general takeaways, you've seen the differences in our taxing fee model in Union County. It is unique to have both of these in one locality, but that's what we have currently here now. And again, the, the fire fee methodology is controlled by the General Assembly, so we have no local ability to raise that cap amongst ourselves. So here are the models that are before the county commission right now. They did take off the sixth district as an option. It was removed at our most recent meeting. And the rest of the remaining ones, what we're entertaining so far. Again, just some assumptions that were built into our analysis when we were trying to propose some options to the board, we had to make some assumptions. Two of those being that since the City Monroe and the town of Weddington provide for their own fire protection services, if we have, if we choose an option that has a countywide tax rate, we would reimburse them, whatever they pay into that, we'd go back to them. Under the tax models, we would change all the fee districts into taxing districts. The town of Wingate is the, the only locality in the county who doesn't allow for Union County to assess fire fees within their corporate limits. So a, a local governing body, the town, has to allow and vote to approve, to allow the county to assess fire tax or fire fee in their jurisdiction. And so Wingate, when we did that in 91, they chose not to do that. But what they do is they provide the debt service payment on their station as contribution. They've done that for, for quite some time. So looking at the self-funding tax district rate, this is pretty much what you'd have now in Hemby Bridge and in Stallings. It does remove any redistribution of revenue between fire service tax districts, since each individual district has its own fire tax. And there is no countywide tax under this model. As you can imagine, the revenue they need has to be raised within that district. So it is dependent and reflective of the characteristics of development within that district. And you can assume a lower denser, lower density, lower property value district would experience a higher tax rate under this model. So looking at self-funding, we've got Bakers at 4.33, Hemby Bridge at 5.02, and Stallings at 5.3. And so here we provided some examples. Again, this is probably just, are just applicable to Bakers. But we wanted to show an example of at what point would somebody who currently pays a hundred dollars, would they pay more than they currently are? So looking at Bakers, since it is a more dense district and their self-funding tax rate is 4.33, it'd be over 200,000, 200,000 value home before they'd actually get to their current fee of a hundred dollars. So most people would probably see a decrease in their, their payment under the self-funding model in the Bakers district. So here is the 20% subsidy option. And talking with the, the chiefs, this is something that, an option that had been talked about before, either a allotment of money, a flat amount of 200,000, 250,000. What we chose to go with from the consultant standpoint is that we provide a basic percentage of every fire department's budget, and that being 20%. And we chose the number 20% as an example because currently our countywide tax rate pays for 20% of fire protection services in the county. So this is a little more uniform along those lines. So under this model, there would be a local district tax that will be assessed, and then a countywide tax that will be charged across the county to cover 20% of every fire department's budget. So you see that ends up being a cumulative in Stallings of 5.59, Hemby Bridge of 5.36, and Bakers of 4.81. And here is the countywide fire service tax option. Again, this zeros out any local district tax, and the county would just treat it as a general service countywide. So we have one county rate across the board to fund that 13.7 million request from all of our fire departments would be paid as a general benefit across the county. So there'd be one tax rate for every resident. And it obviously levels that out across the board for everybody. And it would not require any authorization from municipalities, since it would just be a countywide tax at that point in time. So here's the Brunswick model. There's quite a bit of information in this, and I, I think the council saw this before. So basically, what Brunswick, what Brunswick County did in 2017 is they increased their fees again. And they had this tiered structure. So they use square footage and acreage. As the square footage grows or acreage grows, the fee grows in Brunswick County. The difference in Brunswick County is they only have a fee model system in their county. All their densities in their fee districts, fee systems tend to, to work better when you have density. But Union County, that really isn't the case here. But we did an evaluation of that, what that would look like for our fee districts if we were to move forward with some type of Brunswick model. So we just wanted to show, looking at the max rate that you would need and the max fee that you would need, what percentage would each district need to fund? So as you can imagine, the Lanes Creek, the Stack Road are, are less dense communities, would need a higher percentage of that cap to meet their needs. But a place like Bakers, which is a very dense district, only needs about 39% of the max rate to fund their fire protection services. And here just goes to show kind of where it would fall for residential. See, Bakers right at the top. Again, that's based on square footage of the home. This is the commercial. And again, Bakers at the top, so square footage of a commercial facility, what they would pay, and unimproved acreage. So what we did, we asked the, the fire chiefs to provide some additional feedback. And we've had a lot of conversations or some conversations with them. But I wanted to, to share with the commissioners, kind of in their own words, which options they thought best met their needs and why that option best met their needs. And we had a good response from the chiefs, and I appreciate them participating and documenting their responses. So as you will see, the, the blue, green, and yellow, the majority of the districts chose some version of a district tax model. Bakers, Jackson Springs, Wesley Chapel, Stallings, Hemby Bridge chose a self-funding model. I, I would note that Wesley Chapel, Hemby Bridge, and Mineral Springs did say that in the instance that the Board of Commissioners went with an 80-20 model, it may make sense in looking at some of our rural districts for there to be some level of a shared cost countywide to kind of at least help some of our rural districts to, to experience a little bit of a reduction in their tax rate when they're looking at 10, 12 cent tax in some of our more rural districts. But the majority of the commission, or the majority of the chiefs did prefer a taxing option, or district taxing option. So there was no support for our fire fee, our continuing the fire fee model. And there was no support for the sixth fire tax district, which again, the board took off the table anyway. So just to wrap up, overall, we've talked about as a county and, and staff and the board is aware that there's discussions about potentially rethinking at the local level how fire protection services are rendered in some of our towns. So I think we want to be a partner in that. We'd have to redo some of the district boundaries in our community and look forward to, to working with any town that, that goes down that path and decides to do that as a partner and make sure that our residents are protected and served. So again, I think it's, I think as a partnership, we're looking long range in Union Counties if we continue to grow to make sure that we have a funding method in our system, or a funding model in our county that makes sense and that provides us sustainability and flexibility as our demographics change and to make sure that we can control revenues. and flexibility as our demographics change, and to make sure that we can control revenues here locally. So I know that was a lot of information, but if anybody has any questions, I definitely will try my best to answer those.
Looks like we're good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next up is our chiefs.
Chief Blight, is it just going to be you speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless Chief Unica wants to talk. Okay, so basically what I've been asked to do is kind of talk through what Michael just talked about as it relates to us, the town of Indian Trail, Hemby Bridge Fire Department, Stallings Fire Department, Bakers Fire Department. So what we did was we went through and listed the pros and the cons to each one of those different funding models as it pertains to us. So like, like he said, today, Hemby Bridge and Stallings are both on this self-funded tax district. So the pros to that is the tax money stays in the fire district that's collected in under the general statute. They can't, they can't move that money to the other side or anywhere else redistribute. The tax money's collected on the, on the tax, on the county tax bill, so that's actually a pro for the town of Indian Trail because it doesn't affect the town's tax rate. And the fire department receives sales tax money from the county's sales tax pot. So it doesn't affect the municipalities' draw on sales tax. The cons to it are the funding levels for the departments are at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners and staff, which is where we've had a wide, I would say, separation in what we think we need versus what they're willing to give us. As we all know, we've got growth and a lot of different issues that face us. Where the county commissioners look at fire protection on the whole county level, you just heard that a while ago when he's talking about what the differences are in density and all the problems that they face. Well, trust me, their fire protection needs are totally different in Indian Trail than they are in Allen's Crossroads. You know, this is totally different. But they look at that from the same level. There's no adjustment for growth or, or density. There's no change, under any of these plans, there is no change for the service delivery. None. His study, like he said, didn't, didn't look at any of the service delivery needs. So there's no full-time employee options in this. There's a growth limited to 15 cent on the 100. By district growth restrictions based on the district growth, not demands for service. And there's no municipal involvement in this, in this self-funding. So you guys have no say in it whatsoever, other than to say you can or cannot collect a tax in our town. So that's the only, the only say that y'all have. There's no, there's no involvement in the budget process. You have no idea what we're doing. You guys drive the growth, they control the money. That's the big, that's the big separation and the gap. The next one was a countywide tax rate. The pros, there are none for us. There are no pros for us. And the cons are basically the same thing. Funding level for the departments at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners and county staff. So again, they're looking at, on a county, countywide level. No different than Captain Koble in the Sheriff's Department. And I'm sure he'll tell you, and, and everybody here knows, we contract with the Sheriff's Department to provide extra service in our area. Why? Because it's totally different than what the service is that they provide now on its crossroads. Because we need a different level of service. Can't look at it like the Sheriff's Department. And that's kind of how the county's looking at it, like the Sheriff's Department. So the, the need is, we need a service delivery change. And if y'all will, you know, look through these studies that we've done, you'll see the different levels of services that's required or recommended for the size of community we are and the way things are going, you know, we can't continue to do what we're doing. The next one is a self-funded and the county percentage, which is basically what we have now. So 20% of the, the funding for fire protection in Union County comes from the general fund tax. So they collect the general fund tax, 1, 1.3 cent, whatever it is. They collect that here, we don't get any of that. That goes to, it's redistributed to other parts of the county, about $2 million for the whole county, that 1.3 cent. So some of the district money would stay here under this one because it would be self-funded and then 20% would come from the countywide tax. Again, the cons are exactly the same for the most part. They control the money, you control the growth, and there's no change in service delivery, there's no municipal involvement in this one either. This, this is the fire fees from Brunswick County. Y'all have all heard my speech on fire fees versus fire tax. I'm, I'm not in favor of any fees whatsoever, they're very unfair. The only, the only pros for this is there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any for Hemby Bridge or Stallings. You saw Bakers could fund for 39% of the max. I think their single-family houses would go from 80 something dollars, or it would go down $56 for a single-family home, average in their area. I think it was 2,000 square feet we figured that on. So again, there's no municipal involvement in this. So what the recommendation is from, from us and Hemby Bridge, Stallings, and Bakers got together and, and we met and had some conversations, we, we think that probably best to see some municipal model, maybe even a regional model that includes Indian Trail, Stallings, Lake Park, Hemby Bridge, to get that municipal piece involved in this, much like Monroe or, or Weddington. So we would be in the same situation. If the county comes in and does its countywide tax, we would get 100% of it back. We need, we need to have full-time staff and be eligible for the retirement system. So the issue right now is if, I mean, we could go hire somebody, I could go hire people right now, but I can't get them into the retirement system. So it makes it kind of difficult, as y'all understand, competing for employees in municipal government. If I can't get them in the retirement system, what do I have to offer them? Not a whole lot, right? So it's all about the retirement. So between Hemby Bridge, Stallings, and Bakers, we respond to about 5,200 emergency calls for service a year. Some of these fire departments he's talking about respond to 100 calls a year. So we're at 5,200 roughly between the three of us. The biggest reason that we need to, we need to make these changes in these positions that we're talking about, these municipal involvement, is we can't continue to do what we're doing. I just saw tonight, you know, the, the proposal for the Haney property. You know, that's a considerable amount of protection. He had in his presentation that 80% of what we do doesn't involve a fire, but you let a fire break out in those apartment buildings one time, that's the only one that mitters. You know, if we can't take care of that one, we're in trouble. So just, just think about it that way. And the growth has exploded into western municipalities all the way across this county, all the way across the county line. And service delivery suffered. We don't have a lot of volunteers. It's hard to get people to volunteer to respond to 5,200 calls a year. They gotta work, they gotta sleep, they gotta have family time, it's hard to do that. When we responded to 200 calls a year, we had all kinds of volunteers. Everybody wanted to hang out at the fire station, wash their car, you know? Don't have time to wash your car no more. So, and Indian Trail has about 40,000 people that expect protection, and that starts with the town boards. And I think, I think that's the point that, that's, that's all I got on slides, but that's the point we want to leave you with tonight is we got to, we got to move forward. You know, in order to do that, like Michael said, it's going to take some time. Obviously, there's some stuff with the contract that has to be done, but you guys have to drive that. So you got anything? Any questions?
Mr. Parks?
I don't have a question, but I do want to thank both of you for coming out tonight. Obviously, this is not the last conversation we're going to have about this. We appreciate all the input. I think we're going to take some time to digest it, and then we'll probably have a number, maybe even some written questions for you both as we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. That brings us to item C, annexation plan proposal.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I wanted to provide you with just an update of our kind of annexation initiative that we've talked about for several months, kicking off trying to encourage people to unincorporate homeowners or neighborhoods of the whole, to want to annex into the town of Indian Trail. And so we wanted to go ahead and kick this off with creation of a new annexation website, or webpage rather, to give people a resource of information on why you would want to be in Indian Trail. And so before I kind of walk you through this, I wanted to, you know, credit for this certainly goes to KDC, our senior planner, and Mike Parks, our communications manager. They worked very hard on, on putting this together. And so if you really like it, please give them all the credit. If you really don't like it, point to them as well. So I'm joking. So anyhow, so one of the things, one of the ways we wanted to frame this discussion was talking about the benefits of annexation. Okay, we want to talk to people, what, you know, why is it a good idea to consider being in the town of Indian Trail? And so that's what we wanted to frame is around benefits. And so what this webpage does is it kind of works you through the various benefits of being in Indian Trail. And certainly, the start of that is with our solid waste program. You know, many of our unincorporated, or all of our unincorporated homeowners are contracting their solid waste service with a private hauler. And sometimes, very often, it's a mixed bag as well, and they get very limited service. So we want to let them know about the enhancements in service that they might receive. That may be a more regular garbage pickup service, they may have, they will now have, under our program, access to recycling pickup, which they may not have, and certainly yard waste pickup. Again, the types of services that our citizens have come to enjoy, but other incorporated residents may not know very much about. And obviously, the cost savings that we can deliver on that, we can provide garbage and recycling service at a much more efficient rate through our, you know, our large contract versus individual homeowners contracting individually. So that's a benefit we want to make loud and clear to them, to, to citizens considering annexing into Indian Trail. You know, other benefits we believe Indian Trail offers is certainly with our town amenities and various programs. I think this building in itself is a benefit to our, our residents in terms of having the various meeting room facilities available. Those facilities are oftentimes available at a reduced rate when you're a in-town resident versus someone in the county or some other area coming in to rent it. And so we wanted to make that as a known, you know, known as a resource. You know, your, it gives you an opportunity for your HOA to come in and hold that annual meeting. Or if you have, you know, just an individual wants to have a birthday party for their friend or, or children or something of that sort, you know, we have facilities available to help support that. And so we want to make that, that known. It's, this building is a municipal office, but it's also a, a community center in, in many regards. Also, with our three parks and, and the programs that are run through our parks, those are, you know, you get enhanced access to our parks by virtue of being an in-town resident. You get free access to the dog park versus having to pay for your pass. And obviously, the individual recreation programs that Jay and Katie and others in the Parks Department run, you get, and you get in a less expensive rate to gain access to those programs. Also, and, and many folks aren't aware of this, but you, you have access to Carolina courts as an in-town resident. You know, our, our citizens get access to indoor recreation time, to shoot hoops or play pickleball. Some of our employees do it at lunchtime. And so that's something you don't have access to as a county resident, at least not as a free program. So we want to share that as a benefit. Another benefit, and it's not necessarily a dollars and cents one, is accessibility to local officials. You know, if you have a, a concern, a grievance, or just, or just want to talk to a local leader, it's a lot easier to just kind of drive around the corner and talk to your local official or come to a meeting like this and address the council, or by, or even come in and address town staff during business hours. In many cases, unincorporated residents, they have to go, you know, drive, you know, 10, 12 miles down the road to Monroe to address a, a local official or, or have a staff, a staff member system with their need. So the ability to kind of work with local officials who, you know, may be your, maybe your neighbor just around the corner is, is a benefit and is something we want people to understand. Also, you know, the, the sheriff's office, and we've, we've talked about our earlier this in the presentations, the enhanced security services we receive from the sheriff's office and the availability of having 25 extra deputies assigned to the Indian Trail area, and, area and located in the heart of Indian Trail is a great resource. You're going to get the best protection possible from, from our deputies, and we think that's something that they, the, our incorporated citizens looking to annex in Indian Trail should be made aware of and, and know that how they'll benefit. Also, we believe our code enforcement services is, is an enhancement. You know, if you've got trouble in your neighborhood with a, you know, someone that has tall grass or junky vehicle or some other, you know, some other issue, you know, we have ordinances and staff available to help clean, you know, address those kind of unsightly, you know, issues that are, that are impact health, safety, and welfare. And that can be, you know, help enhance your, your property values and just overall create a more attractive neighborhood. So, and finally, we also have street maintenance and street light service for, you know, for communities that qualify that have, you know, good infrastructure already in place. The town may be willing to, to take over street maintenance and, and, and provide that over NCDOT or possibly being made, something being maintained by a homeowners association. So those are some of the benefits that we highlighted. And then at the end of the webpage, what we've done is we've tried, you know, provide people with information on, well, what, you know, what's the dollar and cents impact associated with annexation? And we've kind of, the way we have it proposed presently is we broke it down into two areas. We have the annexation, we have the individual, so we have examples of different assessed values for, for individuals' homes, calculated what your tax bill is before annexation and what it'll be after annexation, so you can see the difference.
Yeah, don't do that.
Adapt and overcome. And so we provide you that different, we, we provide the, the unincorporated resident that comparison of what their taxes may be today versus what they would be after annexation. And at the end, we provide kind of a, a net calculation when you take into account the savings of garbage, which we think would be roughly around $300 a year. We add in stormwater fees, and we come up with, you know, what the kind of, the net total difference is of roughly $123 if you own a, a home that's assessed at $200,000. And so we think this is valuable information. You know, Mike Parks and I were talking earlier that we may want to just take one more whack at, at this, at these tables to simplify them a little bit more. But otherwise, we think it provides very valuable information, and it's always question one or two when you sit down at, at the coffee table with an incorporated homeowner in, in terms of what are the pros and cons of annexation. So we think this is very important. And the final piece of So the final piece of information that we have is we've created a short video. So one of the things we wanted to do is we can sit there and give folks information on the website when we, we'll take this information and put it into a paper pamphlet to be able to hand out to folks. But we also wanted to give something, give folks information in video form. Again, something that'd be very convenient to post out on the social media, or if there is an unincorporated neighborhood with a group of advocates that want to encourage annexation, it would give them a tool to use and share with other residents of their community. And so what I'd like to do is to play that video for you, and I will just add that the narrator was not a paid actor, so please do not judge.
Hi, I'm Rox Burhans. I thank you for checking out our video regarding how annexation can benefit you or your unincorporated community. At nearly 40,000 residents, Indian Trail is Union County's largest municipality. We offer a number of great services and amenities, all designed to benefit the everyday lives of our residents. From garbage collection to the ability to run for a local office, come check out some of the benefits of annexing into the town of Indian Trail. Indian Trail residents not only get free weekly curbside trash collection, they also get my weekly recital and alleyway collection, as well as four bulk week pickups every year. This is a savings of $300 a year on average for each of our residents. Residents can also obtain a free pass to the Crookie Creek Dog Park, in addition to free and reduced-cost access to programs and classes throughout the year. Check out some of our cool new programs at itsparksandrec.com. Communities will also receive the benefit of Indian Trail's code enforcement services. Our officers work to safeguard the health and quality of life of residents and help maintain property values by focusing on issues such as excessive grass height, uh, uh... outdoor burning, and enforcing the animal control ordinance. Communities may also qualify for street maintenance and street lights after inspection from the Town of Indian Trail Engineering Department. Well, thank you again for watching our video regarding the benefits of annexation. Have any questions? Feel free to call the Town of Indian Trail's planning department, and we'll be happy to assist you as you evaluate the benefits of annexation.
Our intent this evening was to share that information, this draft kind of website with you, as well as the video to share what resources we'd like to make available. Again, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Parks and I and Ms. C want to kind of maybe take just one more crack at those tables to simplify them. But otherwise, we'd like to get, receive your feedback on the information we've shared. And if the council's comfortable, we'd like to go ahead and go live with the website and video once we make just some final fine tuning adjustments. And so, right now, I'll open the forum to the council with any questions or feedback you may have.
Um, based on, good work, by the way. Based on what you presented, how much of the, of, what percentage we think out there of unincorporated residential, residential places in the town exist right now that are unincorporated in the town?
How many unincorporated properties there are? I don't have that calculation with me. I believe in terms of neighborhoods, if you look at it just from a subdivision standpoint, I think we have 10, maybe 12 roughly, that may be eligible for annexation.
And then, all right, and then as a follow-up to that, have you received a lot of questions from these 10 neighborhoods as to trying to become part of the town, meaning trying to be incorporated? Have they reached out to you? The reason I'm asking that question is to figure out what type of reception you're going, where we as a town, we're going to get from the public in terms of trying to incorporate into the town?
Sure. In my own, my personal experience, I've had direct contact with two neighborhoods. One neighborhood was located on the far kind of northern, northeastern side of our community, met with a neighborhood, I'll call it neighborhood leader. Kind of looked at the neighborhood more closely, drove through it. And through those conversations, discussions, what came about was that it's a much more rural character neighborhood. A lot of farm animals being kept on properties. One homeowner operates a shooting range in their backyard. So, there was a lot, there was, and there were a lot of residents in the neighborhood that had no interest in annexation. And so, with the conclusion of that conversation was, you know what? This may not be a good fit, because you know, with, when you come into a municipality, there's going to be additional restrictions than you may have in the county. Some people are comforted, comforted by that, others are not. And in that case, you know, given the more rural nature of the properties and how they're being used, the fit wasn't very good. On the other hand, on the flip side, I met with another neighborhood near Waxaw Indian Trail Road where I thought, you know, the fit was actually very, very good. I think if you drove through the neighborhood, you wouldn't know it's in Indian Trail or West of Chapler. I mean, it just looked like a city-type, you know, neighborhood. And so, we met with them over a couple of occasions. But I think the conversations kind of, again, eventually kind of just stalled out that the neighborhood leaders couldn't really get enough people interested and excited to want to kind of take the next steps with doing a petition or other, you know, steps to affect the annexation. What we believe is that, you know, this, you know, and again, this website's not the end-all, be-all system, but this website and the video will give neighborhood leaders, like the ones that we met with, a tool and a resource to share with other neighbors in the community in terms of why they may want it to annex in Indian Trail versus just a, you know, little paper pamphlet that just gets tossed aside. You know, we also want to supplement that by going out to the neighbors and holding kind of community meetings. And we've done this in the past, it won't be necessarily anything new. But we want to hold some regional community meetings and talk about annexation, not only with neighborhoods, but also with individual homeowners. And we think that that's going to be very important. But it's going to have to be kind of a very, it's going to have to be a fairly comprehensive process to really, to really entice these neighborhoods to want to annex in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Good job.
Mr. Morse?
Let me, while I got to the floor, let me say this. Let's not forget what we're doing here. We're, I think we're just saying whether or not we like what you just showed us about. You know, we're getting into a lot of other things, other than the fact that any time that Indian Trail gets any annexation anywhere, it's got to be voluntary to begin with. It's not like we're going to go take somebody else's land. And I think all Rox is asking is, do you like the presentation? And I felt it was an excellent presentation, and I thought it was a great, great job from, whatever, for Katie and Mike and yourself.
Thank you.
You look like a paid actor up there.
Thank you very much. That's very kind of you. So, what I'm hearing, and I appreciate the kind words, Mr. Cohen, is that the council is comfortable with us moving forward, with going live with the website and the video. And again, we want to just make some minor, you know, minor adjustments. But otherwise, the content of what you've seen is what would be posted. So, I just want to get concurrence that that's a direction you're comfortable with.
Mr. Morse, did you have something to say?
No, you. I'm trying to remember what I was going to ask.
I was still, it was reminding me that you had some questions.
Yeah, I'm, I was hoping Johnny was still here. He might be back there, but can't see him. But in regards to the, this fire tax discussion that we're having, how would that impact someone wanting to come into Indian Trail? You know, is that, is that, is that possibly, you know, a, an enticement?
I'll defer that question to Chief Blythe, if he is.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm curious, say there's a property owner or a neighborhood that's not in the municipality of Indian Trail that does want to be annexed. Going forward, you know, dovetailing this fire tax discussion, is there an advantage, just fire tax-wise, for them to be part of Indian Trail or in Union County?
It depends upon the type of development and what level of service it's going to require and how far it is from our current facilities, if it would require any additional, you know, staff or any of those things to deal with. Obviously, it's a, it's a benefit if it's inside the municipality, if we go to a municipal system, because then we would generate the tax money from that. However, if it's in the county and it's still in those fire response districts, I believe that, you know, moving forward, you would see a contract for service with the county to provide that anyway, and it would pay tax dollars to the fire department.
So, Chief, sorry, quick question. No matter where the person is in the town, whether they're incorporated or unincorporated, once they call for service, they will receive service?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, we're not, there's no, there's no, we're not coming because you ain't in the town. If you call, we'll come.
All right.
Okay.
And this is more towards Rox. If, if there is an individual property or a subdivision, do you have like a checklist that you go through to see if they qualify? Like, say particularly the roads. That neighborhood has county or state roads, excuse me, that haven't been maintained, you know, typical of the other roads. Do we go in there and there, the state? How would that work?
Sure. Well, there's a couple of steps. There are, just by, the annexation process has a couple of different tests. Do they even qualify for annexation? You know, are they contiguous to our municipal limits? That's the easy, that's the easy, you know, test for us. There are other tools for satellite annexations that get a little more complicated, but they're not impossible. So, there's a couple of tests in the state statutes that we, we apply to, or that we refer to in determining, are you even eligible for annexation? But if you check that box and say yes, then in terms of street maintenance or taking on the streets, that's really a separate process. So, we can annex the neighborhood in, but that does not necessarily take in the streets into our maintenance system. And that's, the town has a street acceptance policy for taking in new streets into our maintenance program. And that is separate. But however, that, we have talked internally about the need to evaluate the streets in neighborhoods that we would consider annexing. And it would be, as it's been kind of outlined, be very comprehensive in terms of not only the pavement condition, but also the condition of any stormwater systems and the condition, you know, do the, the street signs and speed limit signs meet the current standards for reflectivity and other, you know, very detailed items that may cost money to upgrade in the future. And so, the town wants to look at that very closely, our town staff wants to look at that very closely to make sure that it's a win-win, not only for the neighborhood, but the town's, you know, not taking on an unnecessary burden with having to make major upgrades in the infrastructure. If that makes sense.
More questions? He's just looking for action as far as the tweaking.
If we can move forward on this.
If we can move forward with that.
I make a motion to move forward on it.
Cohen's made the motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous. Thank you, Rox. Great job. Financial updates, strategies, and audit findings. Mr. Wadowitz.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. It's good to be before you tonight. We wanted to give you an update. We received our audit about a month ahead of time from last year. JB Watson and Company, their third year, and everything went smooth this year. And I think the building was very conducive. We gave them their own, Todd was nice enough to lend us his conference room for three weeks. They were able to lock all their equipment up. So, we had a really good year with the audit. And I just wanted to go over a couple of the highlights. Our town's net position increased by $6.6 million over the prior year. This is simply our assets exceed our liabilities. And this goes a long way towards the financial strength of the town. And basically, the assets are made up of our cash and our fixed assets of about $50 million. And we subtract that our liabilities, which our only real liabilities are our six debt responsibilities. I'll go over those in a minute. So, $62 million, very positive number. Letter B, we have retained our Moody's AA1 rating. The last page, I gave everyone a hard copy. The last page on the paper clip, last time we heard from Moody's, they complimented us. They said, "Our financial is robust, our debt, our credit is fantastic." So, right away, Patrick had me send this out to Moody's. Patrick wants to get us up to, we're in the top 9% right now, AA1. IBM is the AAA. We're trying to get there. So, right away, we sent him out a copy. Our ending fund balance and our general fund is, Mike, would you go to the next slide? Our general fund balance is, page up a little bit, is $19 million. This represents an increase of $3.4 million over our prior year. So, our fund balance increased by $3.5 million. It's a good place to be. This is where revenues exceed our expenditures. Page it down a little bit, Mike. I just want to go over a couple. Oh, page up a little bit, I'm sorry. Right up, no, down, right there. So, you see the revenue. The first thing, you add volume taxes. Our final budget is $6.8 million. And we, again, 7.3. Now, that's conservative budgeting. Way before I got here, we decided we're going to budget at 96% of what we collect. And the tax receiver collects 99.84. So, we add $450,000 for our fund balance, just by standing still somehow. But that's conservative budgeting. I thank the council for supporting that. Couple of other revenue ones. We have investment earnings, second from the bottom up top there. We had budgeted about $50,000. We got about $200,000. It's a function of interest rates going up. Plus, Patrick looks at these numbers. He makes me look at them every week or two. We had some old CDs that were out there for about 10 years, earning, you know, rates from 2008. He said, "Close them down, move it in." In the restricted in the middle, the unrestricted, third up from the top, ABC is in there. We had a budget of about $100,000. And Jim's on the board, Mrs. Kesar, and I know Jerry and Shirley, our liaisons. We've, again, that hadn't looked at for, since it was opened. We were getting $100,000 every year. We thought we deserved more. This year, we got about $335,000. So, good note. So, you can see our revenues were exceeded by about $1.4 million. Expenses, next section down, were positive, the budget. And this was, this was a quote in the audit, page nine, "Due to the town's conservative spending practices." Again, I go to Patrick on this. We, he looks at every check, he looks at every purchase order, no matter how big, how small, questions it. And I know I get some of these guys mad, but that's what it takes. Stormwater fund balance, again, is strong. We have $3.2 million in the bank. And again, this is, represents an increase of about $700,000 over the prior year. And I know Todd's got a lot, a lot of stormwater activity going on, so it's nice to have that money. A lot of projects going on. Next slide, Mike, if you would. Next is our debt service. As of 6/30/2018, we had six outstanding debt instruments. That top one, as Councilman Jerry pointed out last, we have paid off four years early. This was something Patrick wanted to do, never been done before. We had such a good year, so we knocked off four years. So, that 360 is now gone, paid after the audit. So, if you page down, these are what we have left, Mike. 2010, that was when we purchased the, then 2012, 2015, as we borrowed half the money for this building, $10 million building, we borrowed five. So, again, our debt, according to Moody's, is way under what a town our size should be. Overall, the debt are negligible to modest credit strength in comparison to the other AA1 rating. So, we have very good debt rating. Major projects on the board. Letter H, Mike, if you would, page back up. This is what's going on right now, folks. We've got about four major, major projects going on. And I think it's important to say there's no planned borrowing. We're going to fund these with grants. Thank you, Todd. Contributions from our debt service capital reserve. Now, this is a nickel of every 18 and a half cents. And again, this was done, which I think is fantastic. So, a nickel of every dollar that goes into our tax levy goes into the debt service capital reserve for projects and then fund balance. So, we're going to do all four of these projects, and they're millions of dollars. And we're not going to borrow any money, and we're not going to raise taxes, which I think is a positive, because they're big projects. Tax collections, Mike, if you would go to that one. Last page, tax collections for 6/30/2018. As I said, we collected 99.84%. All but $11,000 on $7.2 million were collected. So, people pay their taxes at Indian Trail. And I think it has a lot to do with 18 and a half cents. I know Gary always asks me about that. I keep him up to date. The next slide is our 10 largest taxpayers. Now, Harris Teeter, on $43 million, they pay about $80,000 a year in taxes. If they were down the road in Monroe, it'd be over $275,000. And again, Gary likes those numbers too, when he's talking to people. So, again, thank you for keeping our tax rate, and I know it's important. And I think that's pretty much it. Positive all the way around.
Any questions for Jim?
Can you go back to slide three, please? Oh, no, down, right here. This one, the, that 8 million in the park bonds, it shows that we have what? Oh, it's 8 million, we had 5.975 remaining? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, that was an $8 million borrowing market. So, 6 million was for our parks. That money has all been spent wisely. And then, we have about 1.8 million of that still in the bank, of which $500,000 is for Old Monroe Road. Whenever we get to that, can't be touched. And another 1.3 million is for, you dedicated the streets and sidewalks, which is part of our four projects that I mentioned down there, that we're going to be taking that money. But we don't have to borrow any, it's there in the bank. We've already taken it down, already paying debt service on it.
So, then the question I'm, the question I'm really asking is in regards to when, back, you know, I guess, 2013, we issued bonds for the parks.
Correct.
And we coupled that with streets and so forth as well. There's, so based on this, there's no money left over dedicated to the park?
The parks, there's $6 million that was came and spent. We do have $2.5 million available that has not been borrowed. It's been authorized.
All right, okay.
So, we can go take that down without going through, you know.
That's what I'm, that's what I was trying to.
That's a good question. I haven't mentioned that. You know, $2.5 million is authorized for parks.
So, of the 8 million, we have 5.9 remaining to pay.
Correct. Under 8 million, yes.
Right. And of the 3 million up at the top, we have 2.4 remaining?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we pay every, we put in our budget, and we pay every year.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I kind of understand these two numbers.
Yeah, that's good.
Good job, James. That's all I had.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jim, do you have a quick question? On the park bonds, is there a limitation of time on when you have to use that?
Yes. That comes up again in November. We'll be able to get a three-year extension if you don't use it by November of '19.
So, we have to spend that money sometime in that timeframe, or?
Yeah, November of '19. Otherwise, it's kind of what we did for the Old Monroe when we Otherwise, it's kind of what we did for the Old Monroe when we extended that a couple of meetings ago for three years. Jason, we'd have to do that again if we don't spend it.
Any other questions? Great job, Jim.
Very good.
Thank you, Jim. That brings us to trail completion. Financial savings update. Mr. McLamb.
Good evening, council. How are you all this evening? This is going to be short and sweet, and you'll all like this one. So in the budget last year, we estimated about $80,000 for the trail that we did the ribbon cutting on last, before last meeting. To date, we're at about $30,000 is what we've spent on that project. So it's a cost savings of almost about $50,000. So, that's it.
Is that, is that because the, we did it?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Shirley.
Yep. Yeah, we did that project in-house. Mike and the guys, they did all the clearing, all the concrete work. The only thing that we didn't do is build the lights, but we installed them. But everything else, they did out there themselves.
And that was budgeted for this year, 2019?
Yeah, yes, sir.
So that's numbers that Jim's going to scoop up and say he saved some money, right?
Exactly. He's going to say he saved $50,000 somewhere.
All right.
Good job.
Yep.
Parks.
Thanks.
And I will add, we've already seen that this trail has become very popular. We had a number of people the last weekend walking it when the weather was a bit nicer. We stopped one of them, a lady with a stroller, and asked, you know, where she heard about it. She saw it on our website. And we asked, you know, how far were you walking? And she'd walked all the way from Old Monroe Road. So it was walking down, crossing past Park, through Trail, and back out to Chestnut Square Park. So we're already seeing people using it, connecting those two parks. And that's exactly what we wanted.
That brings us to holiday preparations. Update, Mr. Tryon.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm going to be quick as well, not as quick as Adam, but I'm going to go through a couple of things pretty quick. Just like we discussed last council meeting, we will be putting up, and Public Works has been working really hard this week to get Christmas lights out at Chestnut Square Park. They are nearing completion. As you drive out tonight, you'll probably see them. If you drive towards Chestnut Square Park, you'll see some of the lights that are already installed. And I think they're planning to finish up tomorrow. That leads right into Sunday. We have the parade going on. I believe everyone has received an email so far. I think in the email, we actually said 65 vendors had registered, but that number increased as of yesterday and this morning to 70, including 640 registered walkers. So we have quite a large group of people coming through the parade, including walkers and trucks and trailers and all kinds of different vehicles, and including two different horse carriages as well. So looking forward to Sunday, and hopefully, we are welcome to have you and your family there, and hopefully, you can make it. We also have a couple holiday-themed programs coming up in the next couple of weeks. Just wanted to let you know about, on December 15th, we do our annual breakfast with Santa. It'll be downstairs in the large community room. We actually were so full last year. We did two sessions this year, and both of them have a large waiting list. So we max it at 20 people. The first session has 12 people on the waiting list, and then we have another session that has 27 people on the waiting list. So we're actually thinking about adding, trying to add a third session if we can confirm Santa for a longer time slot. And then the following week, on December 20th, we have a crafty kids program, which we'll be doing arts and crafts based on the holidays. And that has four people on the waitlist of already having 12 people registered. So the holidays is getting really busy for us with all the programs, and people are registered and ready to go for both the parade coming up and then the upcoming programs in Town Hall. Any questions on the parade or programs? Yes?
What time does the parade start?
So the parade will start at 4:00 PM. It'll leave from Post Office Drive, but we are asking council members that are coming to meet us at Chestnut Square Park, or we'll get you in the cars and the trailers, and then we'll drive you to the starting point. But it'll kick off at 4:00 PM, and we think with all the people that are registered, it'll probably end around 5:15. And then we'll kick off the festivities in the park, including our tree lighting, which we're kind of shooting for a 5:30 to 5:45 timeframe, just depending on what time the parade ends and everyone gets kind of moved into the park. We also are doing what we did last year, and we have snow coming in, and we're doing a sledding hill, as well as smores that are be created through the Boy Scouts. We have a DJ that'll be there. We have arts and crafts that'll be there, as well as a trackless train that'll go around the park like we did last year as well.
Jay, those programs you mentioned, are those free?
So the breakfast with Santa is $5, and that includes full breakfast that we actually cook, and then there's time with Santa and arts and crafts. And then the crafty kids is also $5.
So if you hurry up an annex into the town, you may be able to get a discount off $5.
Yes. So, and primarily, all of those register our residents. We do have to, we do track that based off of registration when they come in, and we can know whether they're Indian Trail residents or not. And then there are certain programs that we offer specifically for residents that we advertise within the mailing list that we have for residents. Yes?
And one more question. The Halloween trickery. What was the turnout on that for the amount of kids?
We, so we give out, typically in the past, we've given out wristbands. We did not do the wristbands this year, but we still kind of saw between the number of candy that we gave out and knowing that what we talked to from all the vendors, we kind of guessed that there was over, you know, 4,000 people that came. Obviously, that's not just kids because that includes their families and their, you know, parents and siblings that came. But throughout the day, we, or throughout the evening, we think around 4,000 people.
That's a good turnout.
Yeah. That is always one of the biggest and continues to grow every year. The good thing is that our vendors continue to grow, and they want to come back. And, you know, it's free for them to participate. It's really just exposure for local businesses.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. That brings us to public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and to act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience, as well as the speakers, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing the grievance here and during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect our town employee's right to a fair hearing on your grievance. As I call your name, please step to the podium.
Yeah, excuse me. What about the lights?
Who's in control of the lights?
Adam has the lights.
Adam has the lights.
What can we explain to the public?
Ah, Adam, explain the lights, please.
I'm waiting on this.
It's pretty much like we've always done, except for there won't be cards. So you have, the green light will come on, you have three minutes, and then the yellow light will come on with 30 seconds left. And then when the time's up, the buzzer will go off. And it'll go to red.
That being said, your time will begin after you state your name. First speaker, Mr. Billy Klingon. Welcome back, Mr. Klingon. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Bill Klingon. I've been up here before, and I'm going to try to cover three topics just as quick as I can, so I won't be buzzed. But anyway, the first quarter, you may remember, I was here, and I brought a concern about the excessive amount of litter that we have in Union County and Indian Trail. And the council took action. The council did a great job. People took action. Things looked better, and I want to thank you all for doing that. It started looking better. But unfortunately, the litter continues. So basically, I'm here looking to, for anybody, anybody to give any answers or solutions to what we can do to continuously keep our town and communities and roads clean of litter. We still have an excessive amount of litter we need to take care of. So the question is, what can we do to get people to stop littering? The second topic I'd like to talk to you about is I do not know if it's the responsibility of Indian Trail or Union County or even Hemby Bridge. And that's this. There is a great problem of dangerously excessive speeding that takes place on Faith Church Road. Faith Church Road seems to be a haven for people to speed at their heart's content, especially the muscle cars and the loud pickup trucks. It is going on all the time. Faith Church Road seems to be the place for speeders to congregate because evidently, they can get away with it, and they've gotten away with it. So the question is, what can we do about the excessive speeding and noise on Faith Church Road? And whose responsibility is it? Now, the third thing is, it's just a simple question. Is there a law against noise pollution? Now, what I'm talking about is this. Pickup trucks that sound like cement trucks, dump trucks, garbage trucks, and et cetera. The pickup trucks, the loud, large pickup trucks that are very, very loud, speeding up and down Faith Church Road and other roads as well. And it is very disturbing. You can hear it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So my question is, is there a law against noise pollution caused by these vehicles? Is it now against the law or not against the law to litter? Is it against the law or not against the law to speed or intentionally create noise pollution with out-of-control speeders? It'd be nice to get some answers to these questions from law enforcement officials tonight, if at all possible. But there is a great concern in our community of litter and speeding and noise pollution caused by these vehicles. Thank you for your time.
Our second speaker, Mary Winn Rollletter.
Hello. My name is Mary Winn Rollletter, and I live at 5025 Old Monroe Road. It sounds like our town is doing well financially, but I did want to say that I don't think we need to spend money marketing Indian Trail for more development, as evidenced by our ever-growing population, both residentially and commercially. If we have excess money, let's spend it wisely and reinvest it in our community. And then on a different note, I've spoken at numerous town council meetings to express my concerns about the proposed super street on Old Monroe Road. I would like to reiterate those same concerns. If it's anything like the super street concept on Highway 74 at Lowe's and Aldi, it will be a nightmare. And keep in mind, that's only one intersection, not a whole stretch of road. It takes longer, creates safety concerns, and is a nuisance. In fact, it's even created more traffic at other intersections along 74 with people trying to avoid that particular one. Since the DOT has not listened to residents, we've asked the town of Indian Trail to reconsider the 10 million donation to the super street project, especially since the super street was not what was originally presented when the money was committed. Why should the town fork over money to a project so many people are against? Something needs to be done, but as evidenced by the super street concept on Highway 74, the super street design is not the answer. All we need is a regular four-lane road without the big medians and bulb turnouts. Thank you, Town Council and Mayor, for standing behind your resolution, and hopefully, we can present our case to some legislators in Raleigh to alter this project. I would like to see Indian Trail's infrastructure consistent with the town's unique charm. After all, that's why so many people are here in the first place. Again, thank you all for your support.
Beverly Jones.
Beverly Jones, 5102 Old Charlotte Highway, Monroe. We are coming to the close of 2018. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, the town manager, and the council for everything that you have done this year. I am against a super street project U-4714. This project will greatly impact my property. This project will greatly impact four schools. Sun Valley Elementary, Sun Valley Middle, Sun Valley High School, and Shallow Elementary. Accidents have occurred and are still occurring on Highway 74 and Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. Vehicles are backed up in the turning lanes. Traffic was moving well, going east and west, and vehicles were able to turn right and left, and were not having any problems before these super streets were installed on Highway 74. I have witnessed on numerous occasions, the most current being on Monday, November the 26th, at approximately 2:15 PM. Vehicles were in the U-turn lanes going west towards the QT gas station. The stoplight was on red. There was no traffic coming from the east, and the vehicles in the U-turn lane proceeded to turn left when the light was on red. This is very dangerous. There will be fatalities if these super streets are installed on Monroe Road. The residents of Indian Trail have spoken, and we would like a four-lane highway to be on Monroe Road. Please help us in achieving this. Thank you for all your support. I hope that each one of you will have a joyous and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Denise Wyndham.
Good evening. I'm Denise Wyndham. I live at 4849 Old Monroe Road. My husband, Brian, has spoken on the matter of the super street here before, and he was unable to be here tonight. But our family just wanted to say and reiterate what has already been said, that we hope you all will continue to push for other alternatives. We were at the meeting in July when the DOT came here, and we spoke with the representatives. And originally, our house was slated to be bought out because we would not have driveway access. The latest plans show that we're to keep our house, but that still is not definitive. It's still not, I mean, we don't have any guarantee at this point. The super street itself, interestingly, this summer, when I was going to the beach, I saw out in the eastern part of the state, the super street concepts. And in these areas that I saw them, what I saw was these were far less densely populated areas. They had, they weren't nearly as commercialized, and I understand in those situations how a super street would work. Living on Old Monroe Road, seeing the traffic, and as was spoken of earlier, the speeders, there are just so many things that I just don't understand how this super street concept would work. Being a resident, that I've lived there for over 11 years, I see the traffic, I see the traffic patterns. Clearly, something has to be done, and no one is arguing with that. Something has to happen with the roads. But we would appreciate the support here that we're the residents living here. We're the residents who are going to deal with this daily. And again, as to Mary Winn's point, why would we give $10 million for something that wasn't even what originally the money was committed for? And if I may be incorrect, and I'm sorry if I'm stating this incorrectly, but I thought that part of the $10 million was originally to expedite, to get the roads done earlier. And where are we sitting now? How many years later? So thank you very much for your support, and anything you can do to continue to help us on this issue, we would greatly appreciate. Thank you.
Counsel? Let's go.
I just want to make a comment about the super street. And I hear you, and I think council hears you. I think sometimes you don't think we hear you, and I think sometimes you think we don't care, and we do. And Denise, you brought up a good point tonight. That really thought of yet was the commercial end of it. And you're right, I've been down a lot of these super streets, down, going down, headed towards Alomara and down through there, and they're beautiful. They really are. And you really just kind of grabbed my ear a little bit, you know? I always said, well, it really worked well. They do work well. But you're right, this is a different road. And I understand. We understand. It's not, also, where the council, and by the way, I did see an email yesterday, or day before yesterday, that our town manager had sent to the, and he may, you guys might have seen, I don't know if you saw it or not, where he sent it to DOT, wanting to know, you've not told us anything, tell us something. I think everybody saw that, saw that. So, but it comes with, there's a lot of ifs and buts and ands that go with that. I know the $10 million, whether or not it was set for a super street, or did they say it was just to, you know, to widen, in my opinion, they said it was to widen the road. The DOT can come back and say, well, the super street is widening the road. You have your arguments there, but the council hears you. I'm telling you, we hear you. And, you know, we- And, you know, we've let DOT know in many different ways. And, you know, one of the troubling things too, or some of the troubling things in that is also that, with that $10 million, if we decided to say, as you know, I called it many years ago, when we had a meeting here, I said it was ransom money, I think that's what I called it with them. I didn't particularly care for the fact that we were going to expediate something, it didn't expediate, it didn't do really, it didn't do anything. But what you risk by not doing that is them not doing anything. And quote me, I could be wrong there, but that's my understanding, talking to DOT, or at least I thought it was, that if you don't give them the $10 million, they may not do any, they may not do anything, they may not do a super street. Has anybody else on counsel interpreted it that way? And that's a big risk, that's a big risk that counsel thinks about, you know, for them just to scrap the whole thing, and then, then we're really sitting on something that, it's, well, I guess what I'm saying, it's tough, man, it's tough. And I think we've worked hard at trying to get some of the things that you guys wanted done, for them to do if they did a super street, and we are listening, and it's not, and it pains me to hear these things, and it doesn't seem that we're doing anything, or getting anything out of it. Part of that $10 million is, they've, as you know, said they were going to give us $5 million more dollars down the road for another project. So, stuck between a rock and a hard place in a lot of this stuff. But I just want you guys to know, and girls, and families, that we do care, and that, you know, keep giving us suggestions, and we'll keep plugging away. I just don't want to damage the fact that we just don't get anything over there, and if you don't get anything over there, then we all lose, really, in the long run.
Counsel, we do have an update on this topic coming up later, latest that Todd has discussed within CDOT.
Okay.
I'm going to hold my comments till after that presentation. Any other comments, counsel? Okay. Oh, Jerry?
Well, you know, Chase is here, and I see that he could, Mr. Klingon, he could address your concerns about the enforcement, you know, within the town, regarding the noise pollution and the speeding. And I live on Unionville Indian Trail Road, and I face the same things. You know, and perhaps maybe putting some teeth into the littering, as far as fines go, and I don't know if that's necessarily a municipality regulation for fines, or if that's levied by the state.
We don't own the roads, right?
No.
We don't own the roads.
Depends on which roads. But, yeah, the major roads.
I would divert that question to the Town Attorney.
It would just, you could have an in-town prohibition against littering, definitely, and ticket fine, I think it's difficult to enforce, because it's hard to catch the people littering. However, when you do have things fall off trucks and that kind of thing, that makes it easier, but something we can certainly look into, if it's not already in the code of ordinances.
But I agree, it's an ongoing problem with the littering, and, you know, we had a temporary solution there, let's go clean it up, but that's, how do you prevent it and take care of it going forward? No comments on that.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comments, and bring up Captain Kobel for the law enforcement update, and hopefully, to shed some light on Mr. Klingon's questions. Welcome, Captain.
So, good evening. I just want to point out that I just noticed that I've got a plaque over here, and I don't know who paid for that, which one of y'all, but I appreciate it. They've got me a plaque finally in the town hall, so. As far as this gentleman's conversation about the speeding, we do maintain a list for citizen complaint areas that our traffic cars go out and work on, and, you know, we put that out there on the website, so, you know, honestly, before you leave, I want you to talk to Josh back here in the back, he'll get the information, but what we do ask from people is, instead of just saying, you know, I live on XYZ Street, and everybody flies up and down the street, it's better for us if you tell us, hey, particular times of the day, particular days of the week, whenever you've noticed this, because you're there a lot, if you live there, a lot more than I am, so you can help me narrow down, when's the best time to send somebody over there, because when you have a bucket of paint that's got half a gallon in it, and you're trying to paint something, you probably don't pick the biggest room in the house, you try to narrow that down, so you get the most bang for your buck, so to say, and that's certainly what we try to do with the service that we provide to you guys. So, just whenever you get ready to go, just get with Josh, and he can get that information, we'll put it on the spreadsheet for those guys to jump on. They work these target areas, if they've got some results out of them, we continue to send them back to them, if we get an area that we get results from, if we identify as something that's outside of our control, if it's maybe an engineering issue, then we come over and get with Todd and these guys, and they work on putting a speech, you know, survey out there to, you know, get some data out of it, see if there's anything that the town can do, if it's a town street. So, we do have a program in place, but we do ask for people, you know, come to us, you know, come to us, and we can certainly answer those questions for you, just like the attorney said. Littering is hard to catch, because, I'll be honest with you, when I'm riding around and I'm working, and somebody throws something out the window, that's like being in a boat fishing, and the fish jumps in with you, without you even having to put a hook in the water. So, you know, those are great days, but those are few and far between, whenever somebody's going to throw something out the window right in front of you. Most of the time, we ride down the road, and we see the garbage there. We do have a deputy that enforces for the county that works on littering and garbage dumps, so what we really try to focus on is, you know, I can't stop at every road that I go down and see trash on, because we all know that's every road here in town, but what we do try to go to is places where we have repeated dump sites at. So, town code enforcement works with our deputies that work on that. You know, I see them donning gloves and going out there digging through garbage, and I mean digging through garbage, looking for a name, a telephone number, something, you know, we get people to move here from other places, and they bring everything that they own, and then they get here and say, well, I don't want to put that stuff in my new house. So, then they go out behind our businesses and dump it, you know, at the back of our business parks, and dump it by a dumpster over here to a retail store, or something like that, without permission. So, we sift through that stuff, we dig through it, we try to go and address the felonious dumping, you know, of over a certain amount of poundage, because of the cups and the things in the side ditch, I can't fingerprint and get the drink bottle, and get the state lab to give me back a result, the, hey, who threw this out? I'm spinning my wheels to do that. So, you know, we try to do public informational things, we've done it with our message board, you know, putting out and partnering with other organizations in the community that are anti-littering organizations, to get that message out there, you know, to, hey, you know, don't throw this thing out, throw it away at a trash can at a gas station, things like that. But, believe me, you, if I'm riding down the road and somebody tosses something out the window, I think all of our guys would agree, you know, that's a great day for you, because they're just right there in front of you, because that rarely ever happens. It's normal that we're riding down the road, seeing the same trash that you guys are seeing out here. Things blowing off, falling off of vehicles, a lot of times, you know, these workers that are out here working in neighborhoods, might toss some lumber or tools or whatever in there, without strapping it down, you know, losing loads and things like that, but those aren't as often as what we used to see, because that material costs money, you know, and they're in a hurry to get back if it does fall off of there. So, you know, the garbage service around here, I'll go ahead and tell you, rarely ever do we have an issue with them dropping stuff out. You know, we get some trucks that travel through, hauling some stuff that drop out. I was in Monroe just the other day, saw one of these trucks that hauls the grease, and slams on brakes, and all the grease sloshes out and goes out onto the road, you know, knock on wood, we just don't have that too much around here, because by the time, I guess by the time they leave out from Marshall down there coming this way, they've already spilled half their load by the time they come through town, but I'm good with it that way. But, we do try to address and work on those type things, you know, if anybody's ever got a question, come over to our office, call our office, our deputies will come knock on your door. Which leads me into the next thing, Rock's talked a little bit about the annexation efforts going on, and I just wanted to throw out there, Patrick and I had a conversation about a week ago about this, and I told Patrick, I said, listen, when you guys get the informational brochures together, I want them to put in our deputies' cars, because we're the face of government. Honestly, we're going out door-to-door, we're the people that are out there knocking on the doors in the middle of the night, talking to people, and we get bombarded with questions about that from your doughnut hole communities, is what we call them, asking the difference between, my biggest selling point I always tell people is, check on your garbage bill, and then call the town, and ask them what it would be. You know, it is an effort, whenever you've got a whole community, trying to get the whole community in there. You know, I've got friends that live here in Indian Trail that have sold a house that was in the city limits, and bought in a neighborhood that's right on the edge of town, that they thought was Indian Trail, and their first answer is, hey, my garbage bill's more than what I used to pay for Indian Trail taxes. So, I think it's a no-brainer, so we want to be a part of that, you know, we want to be able to give out that informational brochure, and guide them up here to Rock's, because we don't have all the answers for it, but we certainly are out there, door-to-door, with these folks every day. So, same way as Johnny, we're not going to knock come if somebody needs us, but I am going to say, if your neighborhood's not in town, and you've got to complain about a long-term issue or something, somebody out there, short-term issue, somebody's in danger, we're coming to run, and you got a long-term issue, call in there and talk to the captain of the operations for the county, and they'll work on it, because my focus is on your guys here, your residents here in town. So, I just wanted to throw out a couple of things, I just pulled a 28-day cycle report, looking at the day of the week for criminal reports and crimes reported, just as an eye opener, a lot of people think Friday, Saturday night's your big night, or busy night for us, that's not necessarily the case. So, during this past 28 days, we had 78 incidents that were reported, and the frequency that you see on the first chart, for the south side of town, was on a Sunday, was your highest day of frequency, and then on the backside, you had 112 incidents reported on the north side of town, and Tuesday was our by-far winning day for the last 28 days. So, we try to keep a track on that, and fluctuate a little bit on our staffing if we need to. Sometimes you'll get a curveball thrown at you from a, you know, peak call time of being a Tuesday in the afternoon, or something like that, to where everybody scratches their head and thinks, I really would have thought a Saturday night or something might have been the big time. So, on the third page, I just wanted to take a snapshot, 28-day cycle, over at 2101 Yonks Road, big box retail store that we have here in town, just to point out some of the things that we've had over there. So, we've had two injury personal property reports, nine misdemeanor larcenies, two felony larcenies, one attempted larceny, felony obtaining property by false pretense charge, a drug paraphernalia, possession intent to sell and deliver cocaine, possession of marijuana, possession of marijuana felony, possession of methamphetamine, assault, common law robbery, and two counts of trespassing in a 28-day cycle, just at one location, one parcel here in town. But, I throw that out there just to say that, you know, we've talked about before, whenever you're looking at different stuff around town, one place can all of a sudden increase your workload. So, here in the past, you know, week and a week and a half, some of the things that we've been working on is the Christmas parade planning, we had a meeting this morning, I think we got everything hammered out, and good to go on that. The Holiday Heroes toy drive, I'm still trying to think what I can challenge Johnny with, as a competition, to see who can raise the most toys here, I'm thinking he needs to wash a police car or something if I win, and I might go over there and sit in his recliner chair or something if he wins. But, the firearms qualifications are wrapping up for our guys, in-service training's wrapping up for us, we're on our last month right now, we're in our new range, so we're getting everybody in for the last round of firearms, and for in-service training. We've got an upcoming meeting that we've lined up, and I think this is very important for us, Jim and Patrick will be involved in. So, next week, we've got Union County Finance coming in, going to meet with the Town's Finance and Town Manager, us, and we're bringing in and inviting the other municipalities that we contract with, because we want to get a head start. We want to get a, you guys hear me say that every year on Budget Session, and it's a three-legged model what we deal with, we've got Union County naming the price, and determining the cost of our services, we've got the town, and we've got us providing the service, so we're going to feed everybody a lunch, and get everybody together, talk about some of the current trends and what they're seeing, try to get some projected forecasts, so they can start having some conversations with Jim earlier than later, and so we're just trying to, we're just the facilitators in that, in the middle of it, we're trying to get everybody together, so we'll be up here, and Patrick has got us a room reserved up here, Sheriff will be up here next week, we'll be up here having a little luncheon meeting, then showing off some of the equipment, and talking about some of the cost, and some of the differences in that. So, other than that, I'm going to sit down and be quiet now, because y'all look like y'all got a lot of other stuff to talk about. Yes, Ms. Shirley?
I used to see prisoners cleaning up the roads, what, why did that come to an end? I never see them anymore.
So, those were NC Department of Corrections prisoners, those folks had been sentenced. So, most of the folks that are in our facility are not sentenced yet, they're awaiting trial. So, big difference on that, but, so there used to be, and still, I'm assuming, does happen, to where you have some roadside cleanup crews that come in from Department of Corrections, the request used to have to be made from the town to them, so I know in the past, Town Managers have made requests locally, like to, you know, Lanesboro and local facilities, to get, you know, cleanup workers and things like that done, so we could certainly explore and make sure, you know, I'll work with Patrick to see if there's something available to get some folks up here. Kind of like Jerry said, you know, you go out there and clean it up, it's a little bit deterring, because it won't be long, and it's like my kids' rooms, you know, you go clean them up, and they're going to be dirty again, but...
What about adopt a highway? Who's...
So, the Adopt a Highway program through NC DOT is a real good thing, and honestly, it's a, it's a good thing to get involved with civic organizations, or with the town maybe sponsoring a particular roadway, you know, some, you know, like for us, with the Sheriff's Office, we require our deputies to participate in some type of community effort, as part of our career development program. So, you know, for us, if a deputy came in and said, hey, I adopted a certain area of roadway or something, that counts toward their climbing the ladder. So, town could look at that with town staff, and maybe, you know, allot so many hours during a quarter or something, to where you allow them to do volunteer work in the community, and that could be it, part of a roadside cleanup in the name of the Town of Indian Trail, and they could be, you know, dedicating those hours to that. That might be something to look at, you know, with Town HR, talk with them about doing, so. And then, you know, obviously, if there's a link or something, maybe to put out on the website, to try to garner some interest in that, you know, to start talking with some of the high schools, or start talking with some of the civic organizations around here, about adopting a roadway, and then, you know, maybe, I don't know how you would really go out and qualify your most need, or in-need roadways for littering. Usually, what we see in the region is roads that are leading to and from waste facilities, or where you see most of the garbage that has fallen off of trucks. Saturday, somebody's loaded up everything in their garage, and throwing stuff away, you know, falling off the trailer or truck on their way to that, so, you know, that might be one place to start looking, is around some of your local waste collection sites for the bag garbage, like over around Sun Valley. Start looking over in those areas, and then, from there, I guess it would just be according to whatever civic organization, you know, but if we had that contact information on the website, as something that, you know, had a link to, to click on, that might be helpful, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chase, I have to go to the cell phone store, so according to your data, what days should I avoid?
So, knock on wood, we're good right now, but...
Okay, awesome.
You know, we just, you know, we've been having some good success over there with some extra visibility patrols, but unfortunately, you know, I hate to say it's kind of like the littering thing, but most of our, most of our customers, quote-unquote customers in that line of business, that are out here doing the thefts and the robberies like that, those guys are popping in out of Charlotte and out of other jurisdictions. So, you know, Josh and I were just over at Walmart the other day, and we've really tried really, really hard to ease off of our pro-arrest policy over there, and write some tickets, and let some people go home after they've been caught shoplifting, but that doesn't seem to work out for us, because we have a real hard line, is don't lie. If you lie, then you're probably not going to get that option, and so unfortunately, we continue to have people that wind up in the backseat of the car and send them down there. Now, the good thing about that is, they build a new road on the north side of town, so we'll be able to get to the jail in here quicker, and we can carry a whole lot more people to jail from those places, but, you know, it is, it's very difficult, because we want to maintain, in the criminal community, the atmosphere of, if you come to Indian Trail and do something wrong, we're going to chase you down, we're going to catch you, and we're going to carry you to jail. And if I can maintain that, then hopefully, I can keep it on a lower crime rate, and, you know, sometimes that takes people out of service, and it, sometimes it means that we're making multiple trips a day to the jail, but we've been working with our retailers, you know, when we catch people stealing, and they are going to jail, their cars are getting towed, they're accumulating a couple of hundred extra dollars for that, we're being a pain, we want to be a nuisance to our criminal element. But, the, you know, the holiday season's coming up right now with shopping going on, I'll tell the same thing that we tell everybody, you know, your stuff that you're buying, lock it up in your car, lock it up in your trunk, if you don't need both of you inside the Walmart while you're shopping, or inside the store where you're at, you know, let the husband stay in the truck, let him sit there with the packages and guard them. But, we were just talking today, we've done bait vehicles in the past, and we'll probably look at doing a bait vehicle here in the next few weeks at some of our local retail areas. It's fun for us, we'll get somebody like Chad Barbie, who likes to run long distances for good times, and we'll get him out there, ready to go, and wrap up some gifts, and have some things laying in the front seat of a car, so, you know, the only word that I'll put out there to anybody listening is, if you're thinking about stealing, you might be stealing from me, and that ain't going to work out good, so. Thank you, guys.
May I ask a couple of questions, please, unless it's separate from the...
You can, outside, you can talk to Chase. You can talk to Chase outside. That brings us to the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve. Mr. Collins made the motion, all in favor? That'd be unanimous. Brings us to old business, amendment to Chestnut Extension, CPO ordinance.
Ms. Mayor, that would be Mr. Hunt-Singer.
Counsel, Mayor, just want to give you an update, and this is an action item, we obviously want to move forward with this project, Chestnut Park, what we're calling Chestnut Parkway Phase III. Basically, what we're doing is, we're basically updating... Basically, what we're doing is we're basically updating the ordinance. This is a continuation from the old Phase One Chestnut Extension or Parkway, however you want to call it. Basically, what we want to do is want to move forward with the design. We've talked, I went back and forth with the consultant that has done, that was on board at the beginning with our Task Order One for the, for this project, and we evaluated their, their cost for continuing the design. And between me and the town manager, we feel that moving forward, you know, basically we're, we've, we've talked to them to narrow down the cost, and basically we're saving around $70,000, $75,000. And also, we've tried to condense the schedule, which has helped a lot as well. But we also want to be partners with DOT in this because obviously the, the main goal in the future is for them to kind of take over that whole corridor. So we basically do, we want to condense the schedule, but we can't because we want to be partners with them to help in the review process, because obviously they want to be part of this when they take over the street. So what we've done is narrowed down the review times a little bit here and there and worked their schedule around so we can continue to provide that savings. And so they've agreed to that. I've talked to them on several occasions, and again, the, the designer has decided to lower the cost of their fees, and so at the end of the day, we've saved $70,000. And the ordinance now is basically adding funding for that design because obviously it's an old ordinance. So basically, it has nothing right now, except for back in 2016 when Task Order One was started, that little bit of design fee was in there, but it hasn't been updated since then. So we need to update that ordinance now to provide design right away in the future for that project and the construction costs. So what you see in those numbers in your packet is basically adding that funding to that project. So in order to move forward now, we, we need y'all to make a motion to move forward with the design if you feel so.
Before motion, any questions? Discussion? No, we'll need a motion.
Make a motion to move forward with the design.
Mr. Collins made a motion to move forward with the design. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Brings us to item B, the Monroe Road Super Street. Is that you also?
That's correct.
All right.
All right, so I had a meeting with our District Three engineer and our, their, what they DOT calls the project team engineer. This was a Friday before Thanksgiving, so we had talked, we, we had a meeting with, by other projects, including the Parkway. But again, the town manager hasn't heard any word as far as which way they're going with, with the Super Street. So again, I conveyed to them saying, "Look, we've got to have something right in here." We, you know, it's, it's been, I think the, the meeting was in July, we hadn't really heard anything. They've gotten all the traffic forecast back, they analyzed it and everything. Again, we interrated to, to, to the gentlemen to move, if, we need to know an answer, basically. We need it in writing. So luckily enough, the, the voice was heard, and so I got a letter from them on Wednesday right before Thanksgiving, and basically Scott Cole basically wrote us a letter, basically outlined the same things you heard in the presentation that, you know, the benefits of the Super Street design and everything, and basically DOT recommends going, moving forward with that design. Now, when I read this letter, after reviewing it, you know, again, it says DOT recommends this alternative design. So I talked to him on the phone, actually same day, right before Thanksgiving, and I said, you know, "Scott, you know, when you say recommend, does that mean you're moving forward with this design alternative?" And he said, "Yes." So again, just want to update you. As far as I know, that's how they're moving forward, and again, just an update. Go ahead.
Todd, as Ms. Jones knows, I've been talking with her quite often, and I've been talking with the state legislators. We've walked the road, we've looked at it. I've driven the same roads my fellow council members have driven where it's out in deep rural areas, and with all due respect to the DOT, their job's strictly to move traffic where it's congested. They're not looking at the human aspect of it. That doesn't discount them as people, and what I'm saying is not anything against DOT. I wasn't elected to represent DOT. I wasn't elected to represent bureaucrats in Raleigh. I was elected to represent those three ladies and every resident sitting here. And although they recommend and say they're gonna go with the Super Street, there's still time left to fight the battle with the legislator and gets legislature who indeed issues where the funds go to DOT, and DOT's funds do indeed come from the taxpayer, to try and get some sort of legislative action to bring this back to what the taxpayer voted on, which was a four-lane road. And until dirt moves and the asphalt is laid, the battles, I don't think, are over with them. I would err on the side of this project's been funded for a budget, that with or without our $10 million, it's gonna get widened, and I for one would rather side on the side with taxpayers rather than the bureaucrats that sit in the halls that have jobs that they just sit back in their desks, looking at us as elected officials that say we come, we go every couple of years, but the bureaucrats keep their jobs and basically do what they want to do. At some point, the elected official's gonna have to take charge of those bureaucrats and work for their taxpayer. So I would stand with the ladies there and, as a resident on that side of the street also, say, "I don't want my $10 million to go for a road the taxpayer didn't vote on." I think it's a bait and switch, and in retail, any retail establishment that does a bait and switch would get severely fined and possibly put out of business, but it's okay for government to do it. It's just not right. So I'm gonna continue to work with the legislators that I've met with, who are considering, who are continuing to meet with other legislators that are over transportation to see if there's any kind of legislative action that can be taken to save a traditional four-lane road, because in the words of the legislator, allegedly, and he strongly used the word allegedly, DOT works for us, with all due respect to them and the people that do a fine job there. They do a fine job in making roads, but now they're treading on our taxpayers' wishes, and that's just my two cents. Counsel?
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
That brings us to discussion item 2019 Town Council Meeting Calendar, which indeed was approved in the last consent agenda, but I asked for Patrick to put it back on this agenda, now that council's really digested it for the public to see it in open forum for our proposed meeting or approved meetings. Is there anybody that needs a date changed, that they know off the top of their hand?
Yes.
Mr. Morse.
Well, I'd like to point out a correction that needs to be made on the month of February. Those dates should read the 12th and the 26th, or we will, we will be meeting on Wednesdays. And then regarding the budget, April 20th, I will be out of town that weekend. Would love to be able to move that up or back by a week.
That second meeting does require a vote, right?
Sorry?
Second meeting does not require a vote. First meeting requires a vote, right? The 16th of March requires a vote.
Oh, yes.
Approval. Said the 20th is the one where we, basically gotta get to review some of the changes that we requested, but there's no vote, no action by us.
No, it's informational.
Information.
But, um...
All right.
Mr. Parks?
Yes, sir.
If you would just take these notes as to if we can coordinate, possibly coordinate another day for the April 20th that everybody can be, if, if at all possible.
I will be in the nation's capital on April 20th and 27th.
So perhaps at the next council meeting, we could bring a couple of alternative options, and council can select from those.
It could be at the next council meeting. That can be done via email and then put back before council once a date's found for that.
And was that, I'm sorry, was that the first budget?
That's the second budget meeting for April 20th.
Yeah.
Is there any council meeting dates that were in question?
February.
February?
Yes.
The 13th and the 27th?
Correct. Should be the 12th and 26th.
Should be the 12th and the 26th.
2019.
No.
No?
The rest of it's correct.
It's just February that was incorrect?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Parks, if you could have...
If I could...
I was just gonna bring up December.
December?
Second meeting falls on the 24th.
If it's okay with council, that's a long ways off. We can play it by ear to see if a second meeting's needed for that December.
Well, why don't we just take off this one right now and see if we need to add another meeting?
Okay.
That, that's, do that way instead?
That, that's probably the way.
In eight years, I don't think we've ever had a December...
Second December meeting, no.
I don't think you need one, really. I mean, it's, it's gonna fall around Christmas regardless of whenever you, you do it, and usually there's not a lot of people here.
We do have two scheduled for December this year.
We do. Okay. Well, possibly.
The second one is on a Thursday.
Is on?
Thursday the 20th, I believe.
Right. The second one was, you know, at least we had a better choice around Christmas this year, but next year, before or after, you're still right on top of a holiday.
Yeah. And in the past, have we not generally not had a meeting on the...
Typically, in the past, we've only had one in December and usually one in November.
Yeah, so we're having, we've had two this year, so...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, just, it's not a real busy time for, and it's a lot of staff not here, too, that's taken off, that, you know...
And next, next year's actually, so you want to suggest we move that one next, the 24th, we move? We keep the first one at the time?
I think we'd be fine with removing them, and then if we realize closer to, we need to add one back in.
Right.
We can, and we'll advertise it in plenty of time.
And next year, that first meeting in December would be the meeting after the election. There's an election coming up too as well, so there might be a new council up here as well. So we'll move, we'll, we'll strike off the 24th.
Strike off the 24th. Okay, Mr. Chase.
And just for, I was gonna, just for the sake of it, next, the next meeting, which I know is not here, I had requested, is if, and I think maybe we could do it that Thursday instead of Tuesday, and if not, that's fine. I just, I just will not be here on the, on the next, the Tuesday.
The 13th, right?
Yeah.
Next month, we have the 11th and the 20th, I believe.
Yes, the 11th and the 20th.
11th is a Tuesday, and the 20th is the next Thursday.
Right, so what he's saying is we want to move the 11th meeting to the 13th Thursday.
Do we have time to advertise that?
We do, I just need a week.
I mean, it's two weeks away.
I just need a week to advertise.
Counsel, okay.
Okay.
One thing, one, one thing at a time. Mike, you'll correct these dates and bring it back for approval?
And if you guys don't want to do it, don't do it.
And counsel, are you okay moving the first meeting of December to Thursday, the 13th?
Yeah.
The 13th? Any objections?
Ma'am, do we have any public hearing scheduled for that date planning?
First meeting December.
Would it be difficult to move those?
Then...
We're gonna miss you, Dave.
That's fine.
All right. Ms., Ms. Parks, would you...
I just won't be here, that's all.
Get back to counsel on that?
Y'all get by with it, or you can, we can change it. I guess, are you gonna check and see what they are?
I'll check.
And we'll send you an email tomorrow.
So we'll know whether we know we change by tomorrow.
Okay.
That's the final.
That'd be fine. Thank you. All right, counsel, thanks for that.
And, and I apologize. So for now, we're keeping both December meetings. We may move one of them this year. Next year, we only have one meeting in December.
Correct.
All right. Is that fine, Kathy?
I didn't hear that last comment. I was communicating with the attorney. I was gonna say on December 11th, is it possible if three, three members are close by, we could just open it, continue the hearings to the next meeting or even to the 13th, and then close the meeting? That's always an option without having to go through all the re-advertising. Let's just, let's let Rox figure out what's happening, and we can talk after that. We'll get some more information for tomorrow morning, and then we can make a decision.
You can open and close the, the hearing, but let's see what Rox says. It costs money to re-advertise.
But... In the morning, we have a lot of...
All right, thank you.
And I promise we got the other stuff.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, what was the initial question to me before?
Was there enough time?
To advertise?
Yes.
So we want to move the December 11th to the 13th, potentially?
Not yet.
We'll decide.
Wait and see, if you can, you can. If you can't, no problem.
It's an pending item.
You'll know tomorrow. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's, Mike, you don't have a manager's update?
We have a very, very brief manager's update, if that's okay with council.
Okay, yes, please.
First, I did want to mention, and we discussed it briefly, the Monroe Expressway did open today. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Howe, myself, and Todd Hunt-Singer, our Director of Engineering, attended that event. You know, we're very interested to see how it goes from here, but it is open, so everyone, you know, check that out. Go to the NC Turnpike Authority's website to find out more about that bypass. Also, you know, we mentioned the Christmas parade. I still am waiting to hear back from a couple of you if you and your family will be able to attend, so we can make sure we get the right numbers for our floats. If you get a chance, please let me know tonight or tomorrow morning, or let Jay or Hayden know if you'll be able to attend the Christmas parade and want to be in that town staff slash council float. And then also, Councilwoman Howe, you mentioned the Adopt-A-Road, the Union West Rotary does clean up on Old Monroe Road. Perhaps we could partner with them on something like that in the future if council was interested in us pursuing that.
I remember they, they did it for a long time, actually.
Yeah, so that's all I have. Thank you, counsel, for allowing me to sit up here with you.
Counsel comments.
Mr. McIntyre.
I was not prepared, actually. I usually go kind of in the middle or last. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming. In regard to the Monroe Road, we've heard your comments. We're still gonna push through and see if we can get a resolution that kind of fits the town and its residents. So we, your comments, we do not take them lightly. We, we do understand the concerns that you have, and we'll work to see how we can address it basically in regards to what the mayor's saying. Town staff, Rox, Adam, Todd, Gary, Jason, Jim, good job. I can see the work that you guys are putting in and the results that we have. I really, really appreciate that. And to our note-taker here, thank you for your efforts. Appreciate that as well. And counsel, always happy to get your feedback, even when we send emails to each other, just kind of trying to, you know, ask questions. I'm happy that you guys all respond, and we participate. The civility that exists among us, I actually really like. So everybody else, have a very good evening and get home safely. Oh, one, one last public service announcement. My wife actually was coming home today, she needed to get home really fast, and I said, "Why don't you take the bypass?" I got a couple of transponders a couple of months ago, and she was like, "Man, it took me only five minutes to get there. She didn't have to stop by Walgreens and do the fight, the low traffic and the Walmart." So if you have business to do in town, I suggest you take something for, but if you're trying to get over to that side of town, use the bypass whenever possible. trying to get over to that side of town, use the bypass whenever possible. Thank you.
Mr. Head.
Appreciate everybody coming. Again, we hear you loud and clear. We'll continue the fight. Thanks, as always, to the staff. Appreciate all that everybody does. I think Councilman McIntyre said just about everything else I'd want to say, so ditto. Thanks, and everybody drive home safely.
Ms. Howe.
Oh, um, I wasn't, I didn't write anything down this time. Just have a safe drive home, as they always say, and, uh, we'll be seeing you before Christmas, I guess, really, Christmas parade, and then after that. So, um, I really don't have much to say, except that. Thank you.
Mr. Morse.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Um, I'm going to do a selfless plug for a couple of charities that I'm involved with. Uh, the first one is Hometown Heroes. They, um, they are now selling Christmas trees. That's how they raise funds. Generally, it's, uh, they raise most of their funds to help pay for things that families are, need when their children are going through cancer treatments. They have four tree lots here in Union County, and if you want more information, feel free to look them up on the, the internet or Facebook, or you can send me an email, and I'll, I'll provide you with additional. On the twenty-second of December, Hometown Heroes is going to have what they call a Sugarplum Cook-Off, and that happens down in Monroe. Maybe we can get them to come up here to Indian Trail. And, um, they, um, as it sounds like Sugarplum Cook-Off, they, they literally bake a bunch of goodies, and they auction those off to raise funds as well for, for Hometown Heroes. They'll have a raffle and some other neat items there for sale. Uh, got to stop by Gigi's last week, and they're a new restaurant here in town. They're out there on seventy-four, and hopefully, I can get there a little bit easier now with the Expressway open. But I recommend their meatloaf. Oh, my gosh, it is the best. So, if you get a chance, check them out. Um, it is exactly as that gentleman described, I think his name was Bob, when he came here one evening and presented their, their place to us. And the Monroe Road, you know, we are in a flipping rock and a hard spot. I serve on CRTPO, and here's my fear, is if we kick up our heels enough to where we say we're going to pull the ten million dollars, I'm, what I don't want to see is a two-lane road stuck out there for the next fifteen years while everyone else gets the funding. There's, um, there's a real power struggle for the monies in North Mecklenburg County, and, and then what we feel like is, is deservedly ours as well. So, if, if we do, um, if, you know, with that, with that ten million dollars that we're putting up, the one thing that's happened since the bond vote was that Monroe Road is going to be widened in whatever configuration, a little further towards Monroe now. So, it will actually go to the end of Indian Trail city limits, past Hayes Road, down to Airport Road. And that's a big deal. Um, again, the five million dollars that we'd get back on the back end for Chestnut Parkway, that's, that's important, too. So, it's, we're in a, we're just in a bad spot because, you know, we're putting up the money, but we don't get to make the final decision, and if we pull our money, what happens to the road if they don't widen it? Is that worse than the super street? I, I don't know. I know the, the super street out on seventy-four, I can't stand. My wife complains about it every day, that she has to go south to go back north, and usually sit at one of those silly lights for five minutes. And I heard about the gentleman that cut through the lights tonight, did a U-turn. I sat there and watched the same thing happen at lights, and like, is it ever going to turn green? The guy in front of me, he wasn't going to wait, and he, he took off. So, I, I'm hopeful that if we put enough pressure on D O T that they will listen and do what the residents here want. I'm just fearful that if we withhold that money, what it's going to do to us, you know, in the long run. But, uh, I encourage everyone to please, um, to, to, to contact your reps. It starts with us. And you can go to the D O T website, and you can, there's a bunch of contacts there, and they will respond. I have fired off a few emails, and, and they had, it wasn't what I wanted to hear, but they did respond. So, with that, um, I wish everyone a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas, and have a good night.
Mr. Collins.
One, one quick thing, barring off of what Jerry just said, and, and I'm very curious, and maybe somebody here can tell me, because we keep hearing this. Did we actually vote on a four-lane or to widen the road? Uh, that, that would be, um, I'm, I'm very curious that, to know that, because I hear both, and it makes a difference if we voted on a four-lane than as to, than if we did. And I, and I, and I say that, meaning I think it gives us more meat to the, to our argument. You know, you said it was a four-lane, but was it a four-lane, or was it a...
I think, I think, I think the, the vote, when it was taken, said widen it, and that's why they could come back.
It was one.
I've got, I've got the resolution.
Yeah.
It says, um, ten million dollars of bonds to pay the costs of widening Old Monroe Road in the Indian, in the town of Indian Trail from two lanes to four lanes, including acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, widening, extending, paving, resurfacing, blah, blah, blah. So, that's what it says.
Well, I guess you got both in there. I guess you're, you're widening the road to four lanes, but I guess it does not say a, I don't know.
That word is never mentioned.
And we have, we have discussed this with bond counsel, because this is, this is a very important point, um, about whether the bond money could be used, and bond counsel does believe that the language in the resolution would support the town funding the super street, if that's the council's choice.
Run that, run that by me one more time.
So, we ran the language passed bond counsel in light of the D O T's request for the super street, and bond counsel does believe that the language of the resolution that was passed would support the town funding the super street concept, um, with the, with those bond funds.
I hear both, and I did, I actually thought that might be a good argument, a good argument point, that not giving the ten million dollars, because you said it was going to be a four-lane and not, but it, it doesn't appear to be that way, but anyway. Thank you. Thanks for coming in tonight, and, um, I just wanted to say, we went through this meeting tonight, and, um, it, it really amazes me, is that everything that we talked about, as we went through this, all the presentations, we went through the fire attacks, we went through the, uh, annexation, the, the financial update was phenomenal, um, you know, the trail completion where we saved, you know, there's, you know, we've spent thirty thousand dollars on something that, in all actuality, I talked to Mike, uh, who is the head of the department that built that, and said it would have cost us about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars just to put the concrete down out there, that, that we, that we worked and did ourselves. And, um, and the reason I mention all that is I'm extremely proud to work with, with a town that's so well-run. And, and I, I mean that. You, you guys, it's phenomenal, how much money that we're saving, uh, how much, how much you care. You know, there's a lot of, uh, and I didn't mean to get on this soapbox tonight, but there's a lot of towns and a lot of, that, that are out there working on taxpayers' money, and they don't care about taxpayers' money. But you guys do, man, and you're proud that you're saving taxpayers' money. You're, you're proud of your job, and you, you're proud the way you do it, and, uh, that means a lot. That, that, that's phenomenal. You know, Jason, you got up and talked about the parks and all the things that we're doing. I'm excited to be a part of this town, and I'm excited to be a part of you guys making the council look good, man. I mean, you, you guys, uh, and I, and I think the council's done a good job, uh, also, and, you know, we hadn't had a problem in, over a year now. We, we've gotten along real well. We hadn't needed Chase to come up here and sit down or anything like that, but, uh, phenomenal job that you do, and, and, uh, like I said, I don't mean to get, get caught up in that, but I'm proud of you guys, and I'm proud to be part of working with you. And I, I thank you for, for, we've come a long way. I'm telling you, man, we've come a long way in, in my seven years up here, and soon to be eight in last year. It, we've come a long way, and, uh, I, I, I feel very good about being a part of it. Hope everybody, if we don't have that meeting, and, uh, if I can't be here and y'all have that meeting, Merry Christmas to everybody, uh, out there, and, uh, I just, I just love coming to these meetings, and I love being a part of this town, and, uh, I care a lot about you people, and, uh, have a good Christmas and good night.
Mr. Alvarez.
Staff, they've said it all. It's an honor to work with all of you. Gary, thanks for what you did for the first responders for Thanksgiving. Counsel, hope you had a happy Thanksgiving. David, if I don't see you, have a safe Christmas.
Thank you.
And a very merry one. Tomorrow, the V F W is honoring six more World War II veterans, where the French consulate's coming in to award them with the French Legion of Honor, um, which is a great honor, right here on Indian Trail. Thursday, I'm hosting a table for Turning Point to raise money for that great organization, although the table's full. Please consider, if you have a few extra pennies helping Turn, Turning Point, they are probably one of the better charities that's out there helping local women and children in bad situations. Uh, the one thing that this super street is going, proposed super street's going to have that the others don't is hundreds upon hundreds of schoolchildren crossing that four-lane super street meant to make traffic move faster on their cell phones, rushing to get McDonald's, and probably won't make it to the McDonald's because D O T would have accomplished what they want to do. They've made traffic move faster, something we don't want in a school zone, just to throw that out there. Everyone, have a blessed evening. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
And we do have a closed session.